Good afternoon or evening. I will call the meaning to word this time. Call on Mayor Pro Tim. Lead us in the indication, if you will please, rise for the indication. Remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we come to the community to plead with you, Lord, to do work on behalf of the wonderful city and county we live in. We're very thankful for the blessings you provide to us each and every day, Father. We just prayed in special prayer tonight, Lord, for the elections that's going on. Pray, Lord, that you lead each new leader and each incumbent leader, Lord, to do the best for our state, nation, and, Lord, this wonderful land that you provide before us. Lord, those that are sick, ill, or injured in our community, Lord, we lift them up to you tonight. Just pray that you'll be with them, keep them safe. And also, Lord, as we come into the holiday season, Lord, you bless those that are not as fortunate as us. All this we ask in Christ.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The gentleman, you have the agenda in front of you. We do have one known change, which is to add to the consent agenda consideration approval to adopt resolution number 632, designation of active agent for FEMA relief for Hurricane Florence. Are there any other changes or additions to the agenda at this time? Here and now, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second? Second on favor. First item this evening is a presentation. It is a report concerning our local area schools. At this time, I will turn it over to our manager, Mr. Scott, to introduce our guest this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mark Dorson is here this evening. He's a co-director of Julius L. Chambers Center for Civil Rights. I'll ask him to step up while I introduce him. For the past nine years, Mark has been the managing attorney for the UNC Center for Civil Rights. While at the center, Mr. Dorson helped develop the Inclusion Project, a project that addressed racial segregation and exclusion. He currently teaches political and civil rights and state and local government at the UNC Law School. He is also a graduate of Duke University, received a master's degree from UNC Greensboro, law degree from UNC Chapel Hill. He worked for Duke University School of Law as a supervising attorney in the Community Enterprise Clinic. He served on the Carver Board of Alderman from 1999 to 2003, elected to the Orange County Board as commissioners in 2012, and re-elected in 2016, where he currently serves as a chairman. Appreciate him coming and presenting tonight, talking a little bit about some of the research that he has completed on our school system. Mr. Dorson.
Thank you so much, and thank you for that introduction. And thank you, Mayor, and council members, for having me tonight. That was a longer introduction than I expected. Again, my name is Mark Dorson. I am the co-director of Julius Chambers Center for Civil Rights, and I'm here tonight to share with you a report that the Chambers Center did on behalf of the Concerned Citizens for Successful Schools. We've been working with that group for several years now. As you all know, that's a group led by Susan Lassiter and other education advocates here in the community that are working on issues of educational equity and educational opportunities in Johnston County schools. The purpose of this report was, in part, in recognition that this is a moment for Johnston County schools, an opportunity for some significant change. I know there's a bond issue on the ballot today. There has been significant growth in the district and need for new schools, as well as potential need for redistricting as those new schools come online. Our work at the Chambers Center has been based on improving educational equity and access to educational opportunities for all students in North Carolina, ensuring that every student gets the constitutionally required opportunity for a sound, basic education. And what we know is that there are a range of tools available to communities to ensure that those rights are protected, and one of which is ensuring that schools are diverse and inclusive places. And so, there's been copious amounts of research regarding the impacts of poverty and segregation on educational outcomes in schools. And we know that, given that, that it is critical that, to the extent any community can, to address issues of racial and socioeconomic segregation within school districts. While certainly school boards can't control where students live, they can't control whether their parents went to college, or the economic level of those parents, school districts can control who attends schools with those students and the resources that will be available to them. And those are critical elements that chart a school's success. So what our report shows, I think, and what the Concerned Citizens realized, and what we think is critical for this community, it's a critical moment for this community going forward, is the opportunity to really prioritize demographics, diversity, school siting, and infrastructure needs as a tool of enhancing student achievement and equity in the districts. And I want to say upfront, before I get into the report, that I'm so appreciative to be here, speaking to you all tonight, because too often we find in the communities we work in that issues of education are thought to be only and exclusively the responsibilities of school boards. And what we know is that what happens in our schools, what happens to our students, has critical impacts on the lives of the communities in which those schools are located, as far as their economic health, their social and community health. And so, we see this moment for engaging what schools in Johnston County should look like as being a concern, not just for the school boards, but for the community, but for city councils, for town councils, for the county commissioners, and really for the community to come together to find and to maximize ways to increase student outcome and student achievement. So I really appreciate you all putting this on your agenda tonight, allowing me to be here, and giving me some time to talk about this. And I know you've got a big agenda, so I'm gonna go through the information quickly. The report has a lot of information in it, and I'll save time to be happy to answer questions and also be available to answer questions at any time after this if folks still have them. So we conducted this report using as much empirical data as we could. We relied a lot on census data. We relied a lot on information we got from the school district itself, publicly available information from the schools, and also from the State Department of Public Instruction. I will say that doing this kind of research from the outside, using census data, it's a fairly blunt tool. Even the most granular census data, the census block data, does not get to the level of detail that the schools have when they're looking at these issues. We're also dealing, when you're dealing with census data, it's dated. The most recent data that's available is in the five-year aggregate that ended in 2016. So given the rapid changes in this community, that is dated. But fortunately, our high school attendance areas in this community haven't changed since 2010, the lines. So that's held constant, which helps using the census data to do that. So I just want to say, even though these are blunt tools, I hope what you'll see tonight is the possibility and the potential for making changes. And I think even with these blunt tools, we've been able to show that here in this report. So just to start out quickly, just to look at some school metrics, and I'm sure that some of this you're familiar with, but looking first at just demographics of the schools, we know that if you're this chart, here shows both race, racial demographics, and the last column, which is FRL, that stands for free and reduced lunch. That's the standard measure in education for looking at poverty levels. And what you see, these are middle schools. I'm gonna talk primarily about the high schools. But what you see here is you have, Smithfield Middle School has the lowest percentage of white students, you know, very significant deviation from the rest of the district, and a very high percentage of free and reduced lunch compared to the other schools. And in the high schools, you see the same thing. Triple S here has less than 30% of white students. Again, you can see the deviation from every other school in the district, and also has, again, the most significant concentration of students getting free and reduced lunch, low-income students. We also see imbalances the other way. Corinth holders has is over 70% white. Princeton High is almost 72%. And we also see lower, significantly lower, FRL data there. These metrics, also the other metrics we look at significantly are student outputs and performance. What we see with the high schools, Smithfield Selma is among the, it's not the lowest, but it's among the lowest for grade-level proficiency. One of the things that is particularly troubling about Smithfield Selma is it's got the widest achievement gap between white students and African-American students. Doesn't have the lowest score for African-American students, but it has the widest gap, which is a metric that education advocates often look at when looking at questions of inclusion and diversity. We also know the Triple S has the lowest student, school performance grade of any of the high schools, at 59. And a couple of the other metrics, I won't necessarily go through the charts, but Triple S is among the lowest graduation rates and the highest number of dropouts in the district. It has, in 1516, there were 44 students dropped out of Triple S, twice the number of the next highest high school. There are, teachers is another metric. The data is mixed here, but again, we see in Smithfield schools, higher than the district averages for teacher turnover, which is another marker of adverse educational impacts, that is having high teacher turnover rates or higher teacher turnover rates. This is a map, again, just of the population density, and the high school attendance areas are on here. This shows, again, what I'm sure all of you know, where the population is concentrated. It also shows, as we'll see in a little bit, that there are opportunities, because of the dispersal of population, to, potentially to make positive changes if we looked at redrawing these lines. Just to give you a sense, so this is, this is the current district lines by percent minority, and you can see that Triple S is the only school in the district that's in the highest, the highest block. The next, Clayton, is the only other one that is not in the lowest. And so you have this island that is Smithfield here, and we see a similar pattern with socioeconomic status. And so you see here, Smithfield and North Johnson are in the lowest tier. All the schools along the northeast border are in the highest tier socio-economically. So, again, there's a couple of measures. When we're looking at how attendance areas are drawn, there's a couple of different ways to look at it. One is looking at the demographics that I just mentioned. Another factor to look at is capacity. This is a table of attendance areas and capacity. And what you see here, again, is you've got, what's notable is, you've got a couple of schools that are significantly over capacity. You've got Corinth holders is at almost 160%, Cleveland is at 140%. And then you've got several other schools that are close, close to being at capacity, illustrating the need for more facilities. The one interesting anomaly on this is you see Clayton, which you might expect would be at higher capacity because of where it's located, actually is, is an outlier compared to Cleveland and Corinth holders, which are right adjacent to those. We see also here that there's some capacity at Princeton, and there is some, not very much, capacity at Triple S. So looking at the capacity, and to be clear, this measurement, just so everyone understands, because I'm gonna talk about a different one in a second that's more confusing, this measure is looking at how many seats are in the building and how many students are in the building. And so, this is actually looking at, the building itself is the center focus, not the attendance area. Now, this is just another chart that shows, that shows the capacity. This chart measures something different. This looks at what we call in education analyses, oversubscription or undersubscription. So this chart is looking at the attendance area, the number of students in an attendance area compared to the students actually attending the school. And there are two categories. Schools that are oversubscribed means there are more students in the attendance area than attend the school. Means if you look at all the student-age residents of the attendance area, and you look at the number of students attending the school, if there are more students in the attendance area, we describe that as oversubscribed. And that means that students are going somewhere else. That means there are students in that attendance area who are going someplace else. It could be to another school in Johnston County. It could be to a charter school. It could be to a private school. They could be homeschooled. They could be attending schools in another county. Schools that are undersubscribed are just the opposite. That means fewer students, there are fewer students in the attendance area than attend the school. And that means students for those schools are coming in from someplace else. And so this is a measure of how well the lines are drawn, based on the number of students who live there compared to who's actually in the schools. And so, on this chart, for example, the schools that are highlighted in purple are the oversubscribed schools, and the schools that are highlighted in yellow are the undersubscribed schools. And just to give you a sense of this, so if we look at Triple S, for example, you see that if, if every high school-age student that lives in the Triple S attendance area went to Triple S, the school would be at 114% capacity. That's not what's happening. What we know is the school is at 95% capacity, and this area, this number is just another way of measuring over or undersubscribed. This means that the students, of all the students in the Triple S attendance area, that number only makes up 83% of the actual students there. So what this shows us is that students are leaving. If you look at, for example, so if we look on the other hand at Princeton, which is, Princeton is undersubscribed, if every student, high school-age student that lived in the Princeton attendance area went to Princeton High School, it would only be 74% capacity. It's actually at 89, almost 90, which means students are coming in to Princeton from someplace else. Again, just to point out, one of the anomalies in Cleveland, Cleveland, which is also like Triple S, oversubscribed, if everyone who lived in the Cleveland attendance area went to Cleveland, they'd be at 159% capacity, be even more crowded than it is. The fact that it's only at 139% capacity means, again, students who live in that attendance area, student age who live in that attendance area are going someplace else. And we don't know why that is. It could be because the school's overcrowded, but that, that district has a net outflow. And so, again, what this shows, and the ones that aren't highlighted in the color, show a more effective balance between how the, the attendance area is drawn, the student-age population in that attendance area, and who's going to the schools. So again, and this chart shows us that, this chart shows us really that Princeton, Corinth holders, and Triple S are the most out of bounds from their, the drawing of their attendance areas. Now, when you look at how these attendance areas are drawn, and then the demographics of those attendance areas, which we looked at earlier, what we know is that, that if you draw attendance areas that are, that are not racially diverse, and if you have, as Johnston County Schools has had for a long time, an open transfer policy that allows students who are able to, who can afford to drive themselves, to go to a different school, what you get is a situation where the schools become more racially and socio-economically segregated over time. And that's what the pattern shows happened in Johnston County schools. So for example, on this chart, if you look at, the blue line here is the minority by attendance area. The red or brown, orange line, I can't remember, is the minority by percent by school. And so, if you look at this gap here for Triple S, what this shows, again, with the last chart showing that students are leaving, there's an outflow, what this chart shows is that that outflow has resulted in a higher percentage of minority students at Triple S. That is, that white students are leaving. And conversely, with Corinth holders, again, the blue line is the percent minority in the attendance area, the orange line is the percent minority actually attending the school. And what we see here, this difference shows, again, that, that influx, in that case, of white students, that increases this disparity. So, so what, what can be done? Well, one of the things that we can be done is, if we have, if we can, if we can make as a community an affirmative commitment to draw attendance areas and cite schools in ways that prioritize demographic diversity and that we limit transfers, then we can draw, because of the way the population is spread out across the county, it's possible to draw districts that are much more equitably balanced. So this is just an example, a rough example, of how one could redraw the existing eight districts to more effectively create racial and socioeconomic equity. So you can, if you can see on this chart, we don't, we don't, which is the same eight schools, we don't have any district in the hyper-segregated, darkest green areas. Instead, we have a much more equal distribution among schools, three in this category, three in this category, three, two in that category. And in that way, we have, we naturally have a more equitable distribution of resources, including students themselves, who are resources to each other. And this is something that this, the school district can do, that they have the authority to do, and that has been shown over and over again, has positive educational impacts on student outcomes. Again, and this is the same information in, just in a, some people like a chart, a table form better. So you can see, with this change that I just showed with that example, you can see that you have Smithfield Selma go from 64% to 49%, much more in line, you have a much more smooth curve of, of the distribution of minority students, and you can see the changes here from the blue to the orange. Again, same information, just presented a couple of different ways. Again, these are the two current districts and the potential alternative districts side by side, so you can see those, those differences. We also looked at how that might affect median household incomes. This is the current assignment. Again, you have these, the four districts here are in the highest tier on this graph. Smithfield and North Johnson are in the lowest, and you have South Johnson and Princeton in the middle. Just under the draft, the sample revision that we did, you get a slightly different change, again, a little bit more smoothing out. Still, there are still, still a range of incomes, but it is not as stark. Now, the district, of course, is, there's gonna be a vote on the bond tonight. There's capacity issues that show a need for an additional high school. That's certainly been in the school district's plans. And if you start to look at how you could draw a map with nine high schools instead of eight, again, if you're prioritizing socioeconomic and racial diversity, you can do that, and you can produce an even more balanced system. And, you know, in this, again, this draft, the new high school would be somewhere in this area, again, based on population projections and things like that. And then, so here you see, you have nine, and again, you see a much, you know, much more equitable distribution, three in each of the tiers here, none in the highest, most I think I just want to end with just a couple of quick points, and that is, our goal, and the goal of the Concerned Citizens in bringing this, putting this report together, was really to recognize that this community is on the precipice of potentially great changes regarding the schools, potentially building new schools, and making decisions as to where to build those schools, drawing attendance areas. And those are critical decisions that can support and promote diversity and bolster the direct educational impacts that those bring, or decisions could be made to just reflect and reinforce housing patterns, segregated housing patterns, and continue along the same pattern of having racially isolated and high-poverty schools. The thing about this work that's so important, and the reason why I'm so glad to speak to you all, is because obviously this also has impacts on the town. What we know is the qualities of the schools affect the lives of the communities in which they're located, and affect housing decisions and economic development, and all, and all of the critical issues that you all deal with every time you sit here. And we also know that none of this happens by accident. Every, everything, the way schools look and who attends them are the foreseeable and anticipated results of decisions made by elected officials. And if those, if those decisions fail to prioritize the educational impacts of inclusion and diversity, then we're gonna continue to see these disparate outcomes. And I recognize that, that where schools are cited and who goes there, that's one piece of a complicated puzzle on student achievement. But why wouldn't we maximize every tool at our disposal in order to make, to make that critical commitment to our students and to our schools and to our teachers? So this report is really offered just to identify possibilities that we see at this auspicious moment for the community. Again, there are much more precise tools available to the, to the school district. They can look at these numbers at a much more granular level, at a neighborhood level, at even a smaller level. And they have technical experts who, from NC State and other places that are used in drawing districts, that could help them do that if the school district wants to prioritize these issues. So I'm here tonight just to share this information with you, to encourage you to stay engaged with the school board, and really to encourage them to push for and promote diversity and inclusion as a critical tool to improving educational outcomes for students, not just in Smithfield, but across the district. Thank you for your time. I know I went a long time, and I know you've got a big agenda. I'm happy to answer questions if you have any, or happy to take them by email. At your pleasure. Thank you.
Questions?
We could really talk about this all night. I just wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, I am the son of a Smithfield high school graduate, the husband of a Triple S graduate. I myself am a Triple S graduate. I have four children who are Triple S graduates, and I'm proud of Triple S High School. I think we have some of the finest teachers and the finest administrators at Triple S. My concern is not so much the minority makeup. My concern has been for years, the economically disadvantaged percentage. Now, I know Wake County used to have a 40% rule, and I think they ditched that rule. But my question is, and the question I posed to school board and various other committees, is, is what can we do to enhance the educational opportunities of the economically disadvantaged? And to me, that's where the real issue is. I know they all track together, and it's complicated, but I go back to the example, and I've used this a bunch. I have four children. If one of them is underperforming, I didn't kick them out of the family to improve the family numbers. We meet their needs where they need to be met, and what are we doing as a Board of Education to meet the needs of the economically disadvantaged? If we can figure out that piece of the puzzle, we will improve the opportunities for the economically disadvantaged at a school, whether it's 70% or 10%. The other thing I'd like to see is, what are the educational outcomes The other thing I'd like to see is, what are the educational outcomes of the economically disadvantaged at the different schools? I mean, we've talked about Triple S for probably twenty years now, Susan, or better. And we saw this coming. You know, what you're showing us, we saw this coming as the county began to grow, began to grow into attendance lines, or to new attendance lines as well. I went to Triple S when students lived twenty-three miles away in Carnetown. And so we knew all that was going to change as growth came. But I appreciate your presentation and your good work. But like I said, the economic, or the minority makeup of the schools is, it's never been a problem for me or my family. It's really the economic disadvantaged percentage. And we've got to figure out a way, as a society, and I'm not an educator, you guys are experts. We've got to figure out how do we improve the educational opportunities and success. My children had the support at home. And the sad thing is, is there are people they sat in class with that didn't. And so just because you have an advantage at home, doesn't need to, just because you're disadvantaged at home, doesn't mean you come to school and are further disadvantaged. We've got to figure out how to equalize that, in my opinion, if that makes any sense.
No, it makes a lot of sense, and I appreciate that. I think the, I think you're, you know, there is lots of research that when there's a high enough concentration of economically disadvantaged students, the school suffers. I appreciate the idea that it should be the same if there's seventy percent or ten percent. But what we know is that, that the higher number of, the higher percentage of economically disadvantaged students, the greater resources need to go into that school. And what we see is that, and there's debates about if there are tipping point at what point that happens. But what we see is that the schools that have higher numbers of high poverty students suffer the deprivation of key resources, like experienced teachers will leave those schools. Quality facilities, something that we've seen in other districts. And then curricular opportunities, because there's under enrollment. So there is, and we also have seen that students, economically disadvantaged students, do bet, all students do better in economically heterogeneous settings. And all students, even non-economically disadvantaged students, do worse in a school that is sixty or seventy percent free and reduced lunch, for example. So I appreciate what you're saying, but I don't want to discount the deconcentration of these students as a tool as well.
And that's why Raleigh had the forty percent rule.
That's right.
But they ditched that rule, didn't they?
They did, and they've seen, there's been a retrogression in schools that have had higher percentages of free and reduced lunch students.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor. If I might, this last, are they going to have, are you going to have this president take your, your school board meeting? December, December school board meeting, twelve? So that's another opportunity for you guys to go out, especially in our community, you know, squeaking wheel against the grain, so it's time for us to start squeaking a little bit and show up and support. This last has been a lot of work for a long time to try to help us and out. If we show up and support her and show them that the town, we need to do this, it's time for us to do something. Then it ought to go a long way. If not, we won't ever get anything. It's time for us to get our share, get a new school, or not a new school, but to get more resources to help our children. So thank you for that.
Okay, we'll move on to the next presentation. Town of Smithfield's new cell phone application. Eric?
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Mayor Forte, Town Manager. I come to you all today to let you know that the town app is now complete. And what this app, what the app doing is, it brings the best of our website, our social media, and it also makes a way that we can actually reach out to the citizens of Town Smithfield. And within this app, you can have your welcome from the mayor. If you've made reports for outages and street repairs. It has mapping directions to facilities, to our parks. So anyone that's out of town, is coming into town, can locate our parks and know what's going on, or can reach our parts of Rix. It also has our agendas and minutes. Also, it gives you an opportunity to be able to pay your bill for Town Smithfield with this app. So instead of going to our website or calling in, if you have the information, you can go to this app, click on it, access information, make your payments. Now, notification side of it is actually a great part that's coming with this app. And what it does is, if we need to report events, or say a street closing is happening, we actually can push the notification out to all the members of, to all the citizens of Town Smithfield, and they can know what's going on right then. And the app has so much more. Now, to attain this app, it is available at the App Store. It's also available by Google Play. So as of today, as of right now, if you want to get the Town Smithfield app, you can go to these places, type in Town Smithfield and download this app today. Any questions?
Eric, I think it's wonderful. Thank you. It's just another piece that we can do to inform our citizens and engage our citizens. And that's one thing that the Council has expressed. And citizens that are here and watching on television don't know all that we are doing. Just visit this app, visit our website. We do as much as possible that we can to get the information out to the citizens. Just another piece. I purchase this, utilize it. Excuse us right there, your hands now. Continue to be involved, get involved if you're not.
And what it does, it actually brings in the best part of our website and our social media. So it's all in one place for everyone to enjoy this way.
I just downloaded it, it worked great.
Thank you so much.
Why, 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 right in here.
It worked great.
And see, that's what everyone in here do, go ahead and download it. Not gonna beat the meat and oil for it.
You can do it while you're doing it, it don't take seconds.
Is there a fee to pay your live bill on there? Is there any expertise?
Yes, sir. What you can do is actually click on pay your bill, and you can log in as long as you have your information.
Is it? That's what I was.
I'm not sure if this screen might want to come down, find this department and make sure that first. But you do have access to it. It's very safe. It is monitored, it's not without your information. It is well protected.
So Greg, can you comment on that?
If I know this is free, I mean, for making a payment of the online.
If it goes through the regular online video site, it's not free?
It is not free.
The app is free.
But yes, the app is free. You can download the app without any problems. It don't cost you anything. But besides the pay your bill, you actually have the opportunity to access online videos, council meetings, the agendas, and everything else as well.
So the app is free?
Yes, sir. No, sir, it don't cost you to use the app. It costs you to make a payment. But the way it does it, it takes you to the site for your payments.
All right, thank you, Eric. I appreciate it.
Thank you all again.
Thank you, sir. Good job.
We'll move on to our first public hearing. Before we get started, I see County Commissioner Wood in the audience. Welcome, sir. I'm Sheriff of Johnston County. Sheriff Bism, Chief Deputy, yes, welcome this evening. And our county manager, I think I see sitting back there, Mr. Destry. Welcome all to this evening. This time, we'll move on to our public hearing, our first public hearing. This is not a quasi-traditional hearing, so there is no need for anyone to be sworn in during this hearing. Our first hearing is RZ-1808, Johnston County. The applicant is requesting to rezone twenty-four point five acre tract of land from Town of Smithfield R28 and B3 zoning districts to the ONI zoning district. Portions of the property considered for rezoning are located on Northwest and Southwest quadrant by the intersection of US Highway 70 Business East and Yellerton Grove Road. And another portion is located on the east side of Yellerton Grove Road, approximately seven hundred and ninety feet north of this intersection with US Highway 70 Business East. Property is further identified as Johnston County, ID 15L11011. This time, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Mayor, I'm going to open the public hearing. Second.
Motion is second, all in favor. Here's, turn it over to our plannings right near the stones.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you said, the applicant is Johnston County. The owner is our Old Rogdon Farms LLC. The acreage is twenty-four point five zero acres. And as you said, part of it's zoned R28 and portions of it are currently zoned B3. The request is to rezone it to the ONI district, which is office and, excuse me, institutional. Current use is agricultural, is somewhat undeveloped property. This is the GIS map of the locations. You can see it is divided by roads. Essentially, it was one property before the roads were put in and the roads divided the property. So it's all one property identification, but it's in three quadrants. And even a portion of it was developed out in the middle there for the implement dealer, located right here. So the red is the B3, and the other portions are, I believe, R28. As shown on the map before, to the north and to the south, I'm not going to really go through this, it's pretty much zoned R28 and surrounded by R28 with a little bit of B3 around by the corridors, as you can see. This is the site survey. There is an easement running through the property, overhead utilities. Some woodlands located in this area. So the property considered for rezoning has a single parcel number, but we can look at it as three distinct parts. The largest tract is sixteen point eight four acres. It has seven hundred and sixty-eight feet of road frontage on Highway 70 and three hundred feet on Yellerton Grove Road. The portion in the northwest quadrant is about five point two three acres in size, and the smallest portion is two point three one acres in size. So if the property is rezoned, office and institutional zoning, all the permitted uses of that district could be considered for future approval, which does include government buildings, government uses such as fire, police, sheriff offices, parks, recreation facilities, and restaurants, which are all uses by right and could be administratively approved through the site plan approval process. The future land use map identifies this property as low density residential land uses. However, a large part of it was zoned for a mix of R28 and B3, and B3 zoning is not consistent with the land use plan as it currently stands. I believe a lot of that zoning was inherited when the property was annexed in to the town. Adjacent properties, actually, that's not annexed in, but it's still the old county zoning before it was in our ETJ. Adjacent properties within the quarter are currently zoned and developed as commercial. So the use of this site for non-residential uses such as ONI uses is textually consistent with the land use plan and appropriate. The rezoning is consistent, so in terms of the consistency with the Unified Development Code, the rezoning is consistent with the Town of Smithfield UDO because all the existing land uses on the subject property are permitted in the ONI district. And all future uses will be permitted according to the UDO ordinance. It is compatible with surrounding land uses. It is adjacent to B3 zoning, and the B3 zoning is very similar to the ONI. Compatibility issues are very unlikely. And any future redevelopment in the area will be non-residential in nature. The app recommends, and the planning board recommends approval of the rezoning, and recommends the Council adopt a consistency statement.
Questions from the Council?
Has there been any traffic study or anything about increased traffic?
There has not.
Was that a concern to the planning department or the planning board?
It hasn't been raised as an issue, and it hasn't been an issue for us.
Question, so right now, all we're approving is the rezoning, correct? We're not approving anything to go into the area, we're just approving the zoning.
Right. As the development comes in, that's when we'll really address traffic considerations.
Questions at the time? Not. There's anyone in the audience that would like to speak or against this? Raggsville? Go forward, please, sir.
My name is William Smith, Raggsville Thirrs. I live at 192 Packin Blant Road. General, let me say this to you, it's hard to say this. The county commissioners and the county of Johnston County is not really a good friend of the Town of Smithfield. Over the years, they have taken property from the Town of Smithfield and taken it off our tax books and put other things on, where we had commercial property. You know, y'all did the most, boldest thing that y'all have done up here is when y'all denied them the right to build over there on Buffalo Road. Because look what's happened since you did that. All of a sudden, we now going to have apartment buildings out there, we're going to have service stations, we're going to have commercial property, and it will be a tax base for the Town of Smithfield. Whereas the jail would not have been anything but a troublemaker, but a problem. Now, let's look at this piece of property right here, General, we're looking at. This is, this is Seventy Highway. What they're talking about taking is three sides. This, this, and that, three sides of the intersection. That is the first intersection going out of town. Now, look, and all this small period is B3. Now, we have to look at something in Smithfield. We, you can't, Smithfield, commercial development cannot go south anymore. It's over with. It's past the city limit. North is the same thing. If you go out west, the speculators have bought up all that land out there, and you can't go out there. For a man to want to come to Smithfield and put a small business in or a small factory in, the logical, only logical place now is out Seventy East. And by them, by the town of County proposing to pay twenty thousand dollars an acre for land, and they've got several pieces out there that they, that their consoler has told them that they're going to have to dig out three feet of dirt and put it back in. I went to an estimator last week, and he said it would cost a hundred and eight thousand dollars an acre to dig that out. So now we're talking, part of that would be a hundred and thirty thousand acre. If the people not that, they can't get that kind of price for their acre. They can't get twenty thousand acre for it. But is it important for the Town of Smithfield for the growth to go that way? We can't go any other way. That's an important thing. And like I said, when y'all standing up to the town council, I mean, up to the county commissioners, and denying them the rezoning of that property out there, look what's happened. And the same thing's going to happen here. I don't know if it'll happen as quick, but this is all Smithfield has got. Now, the second thing is, we have spent my whole lifetime trying to clean up the west side of Smithfield coming into town with all the dilapidated buildings and trailer trailer. It looks the best out there that it has ever looked. And thanks to y'all, the county council, for making it that way. Now, on the other side of town, we're talking about taking the major entrance into Smithfield on the east side of US Seventy and putting a jail out there. When people drive into Smithfield, the last thing that I want them to see is a jail sitting out there. An eighteen acre jail. I really don't want people to come to Smithfield to know that we have a crime problem. I don't want people to know that we have a jail problem. And to have that building sitting out there, it would, of course, it would make all the property values go down. But it would look bad to the Town of Smithfield to have a jail sitting out on the main highway. My suggestion to Steve and everybody else is we've got hundreds- My suggestion to Steve and everybody else is we've got hundreds of acres on the other side, on the other side of town, let's squat and build it out somewhere discreetly where the people will not see it. A jail is not something to take a pride. In the town of Smithfield, it shouldn't take pride in having a jail in our zoning district. This is an important thing to be, I want y'all tonight to sit here, I can't be here because I've got to go, my wife's got a meeting she's got to go to, and I got to go with her. I would like to y'all, because all we're doing tonight is just deciding whether to rezonate this. That's it. This will stay the same, this B3 already. Now, if you don't, if you do not rezonate, then the county cannot build a jail out there. That's all you've got to do. You've done it before, and I want you to stand up and say to the county commissioner and to the county that the town of Smithfield is not going to be stepped on. We need our property. We need it for development, we need it for growth, we need it for the property taxes. And that's it, boys, that's the only area we can go, it's coming out this way. And I think if you show the county commissioners and the town, county, that we're not, we do not want a jail within Smithfield or even near it, then let them go somewhere else. It's a big county, and there's other places they can go to. And I hope tonight that y'all will decide, just like you did over there, to deny the rezoning of that, because if you do that, then it's over with, and the county commissioners, not all of them will be sad about it, I can tell you that. Now, Steve, my good friend over there, and I know it's right now, Tim is, you are now the next sheriff for this county, and I'm happy for you, and I'll give you my hand. I really want to congratulate you on being the next sheriff, because you're the best sheriff we ever had. And I hate to stand up here against you about something, but I think this is more invaluable. My hometown is more invaluable to me than a location for a jail. And I think you gentlemen need to tell the county that we do not want a jail in Smithfield or on the main highway into Smithfield. And I will stop now, and I'm not going to be here for the look, but I'll find out tomorrow morning. So y'all, please, do like you did with, like, my life is more important, but I had to be here for this. I want y'all to think about what you did before. You did both things when you did it out there, and let's do it one more time. Thank you, gentlemen. Congratulations, Sheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Ragsville. I actually saw your wife about a couple hours ago at the polling precinct, and she told me not to let you talk too long. I should get that to her.
And I'm not looking. I don't think you have it easy.
Thank you, Mr. Ragsville. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this matter? Will please state your name and address.
My name's Bill Roark with McGill Associates. We're located in Carrington, just a little bit up the road. We also have an office here in Smithfield. Also have with me Chad Simmons, that worked with me, and also did a lot of work on the property assessment that we did for the county in looking at this property. So we've been working with the county for a while now through one of the architects looking at several different areas, and this is the most recent one, and frankly, the most viable one for any sort of new facility the county might want to put out there. It is currently a split zoning, as you've heard, B3 and R20. The primary tract that we're really focused on right now is 47% B3, so the bulk of it is already kind of going the direction that we're looking for with a change to OI. We have not done a traffic impact study, but we have had conversations with NCDOT about putting a facility out here, and we've worked through some initial conversations. We will probably be looking at left turn in and a right turn in lanes in front of the facility. We've also tentatively had them agree that we could also look at an entrance on Yelton Road. So given the nature of what we're talking about out here, I don't think you're going to see an adverse effect to the traffic out there. We've looked at utilities and everything that would be necessary to develop a facility is present in there. We've looked environmentally at any sort of entrances to construction, so we do know that we've got some potential wetlands. If this happens forward, we'll do a formal assessment of those, but currently, we've gone out and looked at it and said, you know, there's plenty of room here to avoid the wetlands and have plenty of room to develop something. So, you know, I think, as I said, we've looked at it, I think it's a very buildable tract of land. We've heard about undercutting and cleaning the material back. I don't think it's anything more dramatic than we'd have pretty much anywhere we'd look at in Johnston County. But it is a good facility location because it's close to the interstate, it's close to Smithfield, you know, it'll be beneficial for the whole county.
Any other questions? Anyone else? Questions?
Oh, who does?
You will, please, down the board, yes, sir.
This might be kind of spooky. Oh, my name, my name is Charles April. I'm just listening here. My question is, why do we need a new jail? Why do we need a new jail?
That's really not the question that's in front of the board tonight. All we're talking about is rezoning the property.
I understand, but you need to know the question, answer to the question before you rezonate. In other words, the reason I'm saying that is, if you, if you, the question I asked was, why do we need it? Is it parking? Is it, is it more jail sales? What's the reason for the new jail?
The only thing I can do is direct you to the county board of supervisors who makes the decision about jails. We don't make any decisions about financing jails.
All right, let me, let me put one more fact in. If we need more parking space, maybe it's time for Smithfield to have a multi-parking deck, and it be close to the courthouse, you know, and then we would have a parking deck. If that was the only reason for the move of the jail, then that would make use of what we already owned. Just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this?
I'd like to ask, oh, y'all, wait a second. Bill or Chad, just out of curiosity, the way the zoning request is planned out or documented, just curious, I don't know if it's the way the sale was proposed, but the change, why is it on three different corners?
It's on the three different corners because it's, even though it's split up into three locations, it's one tract, so it's looking at rezoning the entire tract.
But you may not develop every corner.
Right, and frankly, the southwest quadrant would be very challenging to develop. So that's likely to stay, I can't guarantee you what'll happen down the road, but right now, that's not really the crosshairs.
I understand, I was just curious. Makes sense of the correct answer, the way the tract is.
Well, it's, it already exists as one tract, so that, it's not that it's three separate pieces of land that are being purchased, it's one tract of land that just happens to have roads dividing it and creating three different unique parcels. So rather than subdividing it into multiple pieces, it's being viewed as its one current entity.
The other comment, Mayor, I'd like to make is, there was some accusations the county had neighbors, I disagree with that statement. I understand there was written up, but that, that is economic, based on commercial actually increasing the value of the property. About to build there, huh?
Well, they're proposing ONI instead of B3, doesn't it? The rest of B3, well, I think they want to go with B3 on the rest of it. What's the difference as far as what they want to do?
Right. It just makes the process cleaner going forward. There's not really a difference in the permitted uses, but with ONI, it's just cleaner, and that's actually what it's going to be in institutional zoning, counties looking at institutional facilities, so just cleaner.
So my question is, so if we change the zoning, then the question would be is, I think Steve and I mentioned this, I said it, I just want to confirm, that if we approve the rezoning, that that doesn't necessarily mean now that it's going to be a jail, or does it? If we change it, does that mean now that there's going to be a jail? Because if all we're looking is re-changing the zoning, if all we're just talking about zoning at this point in time, that makes it easier for us, because now we're going to have to talk about the jail, what the design, the site looks, and, you know, are we going to have, you know, half-naked inmates out there side the road with the chain barbed wire, we can go down through, go down on 39 Highway going to Bonn, you see all that prison people out there, it does not look good. I mean, you know, that, we don't know anything like that, and that's why I'm saying, what are we doing? What is the outcome? If we approve the zoning, is that a done deal for the jail there before we know exactly how they're going to sign the jail? Not saying that they're going to do that, but I just want to make sure I know what I'm saying yes or no to.
Whether the property was on B3 or ONI, there's a list of uses that are allowed, and in this case, the desire is ONI because it's a governmental use, and there are a number of facilities that could be administratively approved in the ONI, whether it's a jail, whether it's a government office building, there are a number of facility types that could go in there.
So what you're saying is, we're approving the zoning, we don't have a say on the jail? I mean, I'm not arguing, I'm just saying, is that, I'm cut, I'm a...
The B3 zoning that you see on the map here, it's a split zone. They could build within the B3 area, well, technically, we have a split zoning regulation in our code that would say, depending on the larger of the portion of the property, is what the entire property really should be. So it's kind of confusing, but they do really need the rezoning to build what they want to do out there, is really the short answer. They would need something other than what you see on the map right now to move forward. Even though it says B3, I think the split zoning provision would require them to either zon the whole parcel to B3 or R20, or institutional and office.
Yes, is that yes or no?
So you're saying they need the rezoning.
Then, right, but the rezonement, we're done.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. So when we said earlier, we're not approving a jail, we're approving the rezoning, but what you're telling is, we're, in all practicality, we're approving the jail. I mean, you're right or wrong, that's just or no, I mean, I'm...
If a jail is what comes forward...
Well, but I mean, that's obviously what we're planning, so I want to make sure...
It is a permitted use.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Would there be any special conditions?
It's not a permitted use, they just got to meet the requirements of the UDO, landscaping, stormwater, setbacks, and all the like.
So basically, it goes out of our hands completely at the point in time we say yes to the rezoning.
The council?
Yes.
The staff will have control over meeting all the regular organizations.
Based on Mr. Barbara's statement. Mr. Barbara, we had a closing town hall meeting, this topic come up, and citizens expressed their concern at that time, and the presentation from the county staff, it didn't show Barbara and fans, it didn't show outside inmates. They have a very, I don't know if the plans changed, but it's a complex, it's not going to be just a jail. It's going to be other uses, too. I think they're going to make it. I'm sure they would hear our concern, but at the same time, we don't want to, the presentation would be this is going to be an aquitransit.
Yeah, that was not my intent. My intent was to say that without having any, because I was obviously at your meeting that you held, so I wasn't exposed to that information. So I'm saying, I don't know if the rest of the council has seen it or not, but I haven't seen anything about the design myself personally, so I have no idea what it's going to look like. So I'm having to vote based upon my conscience of what I think the town of people, the town of Smithfield wants, and I'm not saying I know, of course, I know these people from Johnston County, and they're not going to do anything, you know, that's going to be crude or rude anyway. I'm just saying giving up my right to evaluate is my concern. Okay, that's, that's what I'm expressing. I'm not, I'm not questioning their integrity in any way, because I know, I know Mr. Vizzle and Sheriff Vizzle and all of that, and I'm confident they're going to have a quality act, but it's the matter of not having any idea today. That's my concern. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand. At this time, I guess there is a potential that we could be, if you, what we, what I just passed out or some presentation that gave us many months ago when we were considering the other site, gives an idea of what a law enforcement picture could look like based off of, I guess, the architect that we're working with at the time, have no idea if that's, the architect have no idea if that's what's proposed here, but that is an idea for the facility. Could it be bad news?
Those renderings are representative of what a facility could look like. The stereotype of inmates, half-dressed, orange jumpsuits, out pumping iron is not a modern jail facility. In this type, anything we're doing today, these sort of exercise yards are fully screened from public view. Is there a fence? Yes, there is a fence, but that fence is in case there's ever an emergency that you have to, you know, protect that zone. But on a daily basis, it's not, orange is the new black, you know, it's, it is a very attractive building. I would dare say that most people who drive by would have no clue what the facility was, except for the name and the squad cars outside.
That is my question. The only other question I have is, so all this property, so the property that you have, is it all allocated for that project, or is there going to be extra spaces left over for something else?
There's room for additional support facilities, you know, conceivably. You could have a sheriff's office, you could have a 911 EMS facility, other county offices. It will not require the entire tract, so there is going to be room for master plan for an entire county complex to be there.
You finished? I said so. Yeah, I'm from Van Hackett Woods up from Brogdon originally, grew up down there. With John Deere Place, Daniel Lassier Place, has been there for quite a few years now, and the old Brogdon Mills, I guess it was, is now part of Airline Products that have selling right beside Yelton Grove Church on the top, in the north part of the map there, top part of the map. That is their second facility, and the third facility is where the old Shawco building is in the bottom left. So there's already businesses out there now, you know, that are being used. I don't think that's really a residential-type area that's going to grow up there regardless. I think, if, I understand that, you know, we can't build the, we can't have a jail service in Johnston County and the courthouse being Smithfield and the jails in Prince, it makes no sense. And I'm sure the sheriff and county manager is going to make this a good thing, and we're just, you know, it's not, it's going to look good, it's got to go somewhere, and it's got, and it'll be beneficial, because the people there are going to eat somewhere. Guess where they're going to go? To our town. So, you know, there's a lot of places it could go, at least it's not going Buffalo Road, but, you know, I see this, it's a beautiful for our town, because there's already businesses there. It'll just bring in a probably a prettier place than what's already there, because they're just metal buildings. So I think this is a good, you know, regardless, if it goes there or not, I think if we read between the lines, it's probably a good possibility that happened, that rezoning that will not be an issue for where it is for our community or town, and I think it'll do a top-notch job regardless. Thank you.
Where's the city limits on that road in relation to that piece of property? Not ETJ, but actual city limits. Where does our city limits at, are there, do you know?
This property is within the city, and this property is within the city.
Is that satellite annexation though, or is that actual city limits, that's what?
This is a satellite. I think this is actual town. This is a satellite, I think this is actual town.
This area is where utilities, I'm sorry, the services, are there?
Ted, can you correct me if I'm wrong, there are county sewer lines and town water lines, is that correct?
County and county water lines.
Okay, county and county.
And town sewer.
Town sewer, okay.
County and water. Yeah, county and city water.
About Atlantic.
It'd be served by Duke.
Steve, one question I have, since the surrounding properties are currently R20, would this be considered spot zoning?
It's a large enough parcel where I don't think so. It's kind of encompassing the three corners, so I think, I think we're fine. Bob could also speak to that if you'd like.
I do not think it's spot zoning.
The, and the B3 uses are very similar to your ONI, so I don't think anybody would consider it that way.
Right, school system right down the street.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I would like to say, I think I'm right, on the bottom part of that parcel, if I'm not mistaken, that's the utility line going through there, so nothing can go there anyway.
Yeah, a utility runs something...
Runs right through there.
Yeah, right through there, so that little parcel, you probably couldn't build anything anyway. So that's really a, probably a non-issue, any kind of facility being there, maybe across the road on the northern end, but that little spot there is really nothing.
I would just like to say, Mr. Mayor, I do like to reflect back to the statement that you made earlier, that you know, I mean, why do we need a jail? I mean, and also, I mean, appearance is everything, you know, the jail is a jail, you know, even, you know, going back to what Mr. Ragdell said, you know, when you coming in 70, you know, coming into town, and that's the first thing you see, the other part of 70, you know, that's the prison sits out there, and you know, and then you start talking to perception, I mean, prison, jail, and you look at the school system, I mean, what's going to make people want to come to Smithfield? What's going to make people, you know, want to send their kids to school here? So I mean, everything do kind of ties in hand in hand, so, I mean, it can get pretty built, but it's jail, I mean, it's not a hotel, so people are not just going to go check in, I mean, that's right, that's why they're going to be locked up, so, that's just my point.
One point, according to the report here, it says that, I don't have the right report, but it says that water, electric, and sewer are Town of Smithfield's. What says in your paper here on page 45?
It says electric.
Yeah, it says electric power provider, electric provider Town of Smithfield, water and sewer provider Town of Smithfield, that's what it says on the...
Just talking to the...
Yeah, I thought I had read that somewhere.
Is it electric or not in that area of Town of Smithfield?
What is electric, Steve?
My apologies.
So, let me ask this question, because I think you said I believe, is that right? Is it Duke or not? Okay. Any other questions?
They're not going to request annexation for this property, is that correct?
Annexation is not being requested at this time, nor do I anticipate it.
Hopefully the sheriff doesn't need police protection, and I have seen a lot of police cars at the courthouse recently, so, maybe so, right? We all work together. Any other questions? Yes, sir, please go ahead.
My name is Mark Lane, I live in 2080 Overton Grove Road, there in Smithfield. Mr. Mayor, since I'm on the planning board, I want to be sure it's okay if I speak here tonight.
You certainly can speak as a citizen.
Right. Rick, Steve, I'm not up here to talk your jail down, I'm saying, the problem I have with it is the traffic, that's the only, only problem we've got here. And I hear Steve a few minutes ago say that we don't discuss the traffic tonight, but then again, I hear him say, this is the last time there's going to be anything hurt on it, and it's going with a staff decision. So, I guess I just need to speak my piece about traffic right now. I know DOT, they're estimating 7,000 cars on that road, as of today. Between 7:00 in the morning, 8:30, I live on that road, I come out, I try to turn left, it takes forever, I sit there sometimes five minutes. In the afternoons, 4:30, 5:30 to 6 o'clock, it's the same way, turn a left at 5:30. Airflow, which is in the old Shellco Building, or Shellcross Building, they get off, the other airflow on the other side of the church, they get off, they get off at the same time. They all come together, they all meet at that crossroads, and it's, I mean, it's a mess. And I hear the, I guess the planner, or engineer, or whatever, talk about a left turn lane, that's, my opinion is going to make it worse, that's just going to back the traffic up in front of the Overton Grove Road. So, what I'm asking is, I don't have a problem with the jail, that's not what I'm here for. The traffic is going to be a concern, and it just needs to be on the record that it's been told it's going to be a concern. I know it's going to be, ultimately, DOT, whatever happens, but it's going to create a problem there, so, that's the only problem I see with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Yes, sir, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. I'm not here tonight to speak, but I felt like I needed to get up and speak, because I wanted to address Mr. Lee. Mr. Lee, the prison that you see on US 70 is nothing like this is going to be. If you look at the photos that are being, you know, looked at by you guys, pretty much, and you know, the question about is it going to be a jail, or what is it going to be, I know we're not, you know, y'all are going to be asked to rezon the property, but yes, the discussion is to build a jail on the back of the property, and hopefully the commissioner will see fit to build a sheriff's office in the front of the property, so we're pretty much looking on...
Raise a pointer.
Yep. Hope the jail go back here, and I hope the sheriff's office go in the front. Looking into the future, I want a commissioner, their job is to build a jail, give me the key stone, and say, go in front of the sheriff. I hope in the future, maybe a 911 center here, and maybe we can work out something, like, yeah, I want a commissioner, I would like to see maybe the county work with the town and put a fire department here one day. I don't, you know, that would be my say so, and I'm not a commissioner, I'm a sheriff. I do want you to know, I've been sheriff for 20 years, and hope, I was elected not for four years. I'm going to assure y'all that my working relationship with the commissioners has been great. We're not going to put anything out there with a fence, they mentioned a fence earlier. The fence is not for the inmates to get out of jail and run around in, the fence is to keep the public away from the building. But when you drive by the John Deere dealership, I hope to see a sheriff's office on the front of the property, a jail on the back of the property, I hope to see a driveway out of the Everton Grove, or the milk truck and the bread truck. Folks, we've got to have a new jail, our jail designed to hold 191, everybody talked about, we don't want a jail around here. Y'all, we got it right here, a block and a half, promise, it's in the courthouse. But we look in the building, a nice building, and with all due respect, Mr. Lee, it ain't going to be the inmates running out there inside of a fence. I would tell you, we looked at 12 to 14 properties around Smithfield, on my board that I deal with, the commissioners, there are some that won't be carried to jail five and a half miles out to the landfill. So every time a Smithfield officer arrests a person, they got to drive five and a half miles, you're taking an officer out of the town to go out there. They got to book them in, go before the master, they can run right in here at the John Deere dealership, do the same thing, and get back into town. Every person that's arrested, whether it's some Benson, Wilson Mills, Clay, or whatever has got to come at the jail. I have worked hard behind the scenes, some of the commissioners, like I have worded them to death, and I have said, y'all, we got to keep the jail near Smithfield, that only makes common sense, but I am committed to denying that. Again, I love to stay, I'm not a commissioner, but I've worked with them every day, I take a lot of pride, of my, my relationship with the manager, the town commissioner, excuse me, the county commissioners, the county attorney, and for Mr. Ragdell's, tonight, to make a comment about the work relationship with the commissioner and this board, I took offense to that, y'all are fine individuals, the people on the county board are fine individuals, and other than that, we all work for the best of the people. But I just ask you tonight to give a consideration, apparently there were some that were going to say that a jail would go on this site, that's why we're here, y'all. To get the property, to get it rezoned, so we can put a jail on the back of the property, a sheriff's office, and I hope a 911 center. We are busting at the seams for space. We have met the needs of the schools, but we have neglected the needs of the county government and the jail. We will, I have budgeted $1.2 million this year to pay for housing inmates outside of our county. We're going to pay Wayne and Sampson, $1.2 million plus to house inmates. I got about 53 inmates that are, are the inmates of the sheriff of Johnston County tonight, that are being housed in the Wayne and Sampson County jails. The other thing I'm asking y'all to give it some good consideration, folks, we don't want the jail at the landfill, and then the sheriff's office at the landfill, and then the 911 center at the landfill. I don't think we need to move that way, I think we need to stay right here. Some folks will move to county seat to collect me if they could. I'm trying to work with our commissioners to keep the jail and the government buildings in the county seat where they belong, at where the county government operates out of. I didn't come to speak tonight, I sat back there, and I just wanted to set the record straight, folks, I'm a straight shooter, I'm telling you, we're here tonight because we need a new jail, we want to keep up here, the Town of Smithfield, the county seat, and last thing I want is for us to have, to start moving the county government out at the landfill, it's not good for the, our county seat and the Town of Smithfield. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Sheriff. Any other questions?
There's only one comment, the, we did have that meeting with I-95, I-95 quarter of people, and they were talking about expanding a part of our business 70, out of town, going in that direction, widening it, and there were some issues related to that, so I just want to make sure that we do, and again, to what Mr. Lane said, we want to make sure that we do encourage DOT to keep a close look on the traffic in that area as the construction, as the building's built. The sheriff's office wanted to, they don't have to try to fight traffic, get out of that thing either. So, I mean, I think we can work with DOT on, but we just may make sure that the planning board keeps that in forefront to answer the needs of our citizens, all of our people in that area. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, thank you, thanks for your comments and putting that out. We're here on the rezoning tonight, strictly for the rezoning, that's what is before us, right? But now that you have made public your plans, I do appreciate it. I just do want to say that when we were looking at another property within the city, you know, I didn't think it was the best location for jail and council office as well, and since then, reached out a 300-plus residential subdivision, going there, right? But when we were having those discussions, yourself and the county commissioners mentioned that you didn't want to keep it in Smithfield and around Smithfield as far as government offices. So, I for one, appreciate that, appreciate you standing behind your work and saying that you're not going to move it out in fact, wherever, whether that's many people, or frozen constantly, and I understand both sides of those issues, but the fact that you're trying to keep it close proximity to government buildings and the people that work in those government buildings close to Smithfield, I do appreciate it. That's just my... Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, in light of some of what's been said today, I'd like to ask our contract person involved in our economic development, Rocky Lane's here tonight, I'd like to have him come up and just address real quickly, in just a couple of minutes, what the sheriff just described, if it was placed out at this location, how would that affect our economic future out in this area?
The jail is a commercial enterprise. I think somebody pointed out their jobs, and those folks eat lunch, they buy gas, they buy groceries, they buy all kinds of things. If the jail moves ahead to another site, if it doesn't move ahead on this site, then you're going to lose that impact. And those impacts are, can be significant. We did a economic impact, an economic and physical impact analysis of a local project in a nearby community, and the, the effect of the jobs were tremendous, direct, indirect, and induced. You already got, as the sheriff pointed out, you already got the jail, and you've got those jobs here, and those people are spending money in your town, in our town. If it goes to the landfill, you're going to lose that, you're going to lose that impact, and it's going to go away. Everything I've heard about the building itself, it sounds like it'll be a very attractive building, it'll be a modern building, you won't know that it's a, it's a, it's a jail. It just seems like to me it's a very positive thing, that's my opinion, that's based on looking at the positives and negatives of something like that, and to me, it's a positive. You already got that impact, if it goes somewhere other than that, that location, you're going to lose that impact. Not only you're going to lose that impact, but if things go through that site, as the sheriff has pointed out, the 911 center, his office, and maybe some other government facility, you're going to lose those two. They're going to move away, and then they'll shop, and they'll spend their money somewhere else other than Smithfield. Any questions?
Well, we might even improve our parking situation with some of the deputy sheriff's cars parked down there.
Absolutely. So, where is it? Anybody got any questions?
Thank you, Sheriff. Mayor, I make a motion, close the clock here. Yes, ma'am. Will state your name and address of the...
My name is Molly Clark, rural 18th South Third Streets, Smithfield, North Carolina. Thank you for giving me a chance, I don't have questions, I just have a couple of comments. One, I'm relatively new to the area, I moved here in January, and I just want to make it clear that we do understand there are advantages and disadvantages to this jail, but let's not paint a pretty picture, it is still a jail. So, the fact that I hear you, or I hear people trying to make it look pretty, I think what Mr. Lee was trying to get across is, yes, it may provide jobs, it will provide jobs, but it also will increase in cross-racial rates. Now we have rooms to house people that we didn't house before. So I would, I would like for you guys to seriously consider, not only the economic impact, but the impact that it will have on those economically disadvantaged youth that we talked about, because those are the ones who will eventually be falling in those jails.
Anyone else wish you to speak?
Well, I'm just going to make a comment, that I, I think, I've known the sheriff a long time, I don't think he'd do anything to hurt Smithfield in the appearance or otherwise, but I would like to ask him, when you start, if it comes to reality, that on your signage, please don't use the word jail or detention facility, just put law enforcement center or something. I mean, that might be a minor point, but still. I travel in Raleigh all the time, and you pass a number of detention facilities, and 99.99% of people do not know that they're there.
I don't make a call, it's still a P.
May I have a motion in a second to close the clock here, in favor? All opposed? Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to approve, and I will report table this request.
I'm going to be a proponent.
Second. A motion in a second to approve, in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Here's, now I'll be entertaining a motion to authenticate, they're in the West Assistant to our comprehensive management claim.
So moved, it's set forth in motion.
Second. Motion in a second, in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Motion carries. Sheriff, Ms. Manager, Chief Deputy, thank you for coming this evening.
I'm here while we all three hundred and fifty.
I wish you'd say, "Live us a while, we're not finished."
Okay, let's, we'll move on to the, to the next public hearing. This again is not a quasi judicial hearing, so therefore there is no need to have any questions sworn in at this time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Play. Our next public hearing is DA-1801 Stevenson, General Contractors. The applicant is requesting an amendment to the town's UDO ordinance, Article 6, Section 6.5, Tables of Uses and Activities to Allow for Licensed Facilities. Childcare Center has a special use for supplemental standards in the O-N-I zoning district. This time, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Thank you, Mayor. I have a motion in a second, on my favor.
Thank you. So this request is from Durwood Stevenson, Stevenson Contracting, to amend the UDO to allow a licensed childcare center in the O-N-I zoning district as a special use of supplementary standards. So this is really the extent of the tax amendment right here. It's adding an SS in the land use table. And the SS stands for special use permit and the second S is supplementary standards. And supplementary standards just lists some criteria for, for the childcare centers that the special use has to adhere to. So the UDO allows licensed childcare centers within the commercial business districts and industrial districts currently. Licensed childcare centers will be compatible or more compatible with permitted uses in the O-N-I district as compared to those in commercial and industrial zoning districts. For instance, most typically daycare uses in industrial districts in most other towns that I'm familiar with allow them only as accessory uses to the principal uses. So you can have it within your, your business, but not as a freestanding, standalone daycare. In our, in our case, our code actually allows daycares in the industrial district utilizing, you know, prime industrial land, but we're not allowing it in the O-N-I district, which is more similar to a B3 or other type uses. Childcare centers in the O-N-I districts will not displace retail activities, pedestrian and vehicular traffic as it would in the commercial business district where it is allowed. The childcare centers will be supportive of office and institutional uses by providing childcare services for workers in the area and nearby residential areas without causing disruption, without displacing really other, other uses that rely on, on commercial traffic and foot traffic. Staff believes the text amendment is consistent with the comprehensive growth plan and other adopted plans, and the request is reasonable and in the public interest. Staff in the planning board recommend approval of this only text amendment with a consistency statement declaring the, the request consistent with the growth management plan and it's reasonable in the public interest.
Anyone in the audience wish to speak for or against this?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second. I have a question, on my favor.
Aye.
I move we approve the request. Along with consistency statement, it's set forth in the union.
I accept that motion. I have a motion to say to approve as well as, I think, the consent statement.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well now we will move on to public hearing number three. This is a quasi judicial hearing, so therefore anyone wishing to speak for or against this, please stand and be screened by the board. Mr. Stevenson, do you plan to speak for or against this? Do you mind, just go ahead, let's go ahead and swear to you in just in case. Maybe the council may have some, maybe ask some questions as well.
Please raise your right hand. Do you still need for him to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next item is SUP-18-11, Durwood Stevenson. The applicant is requesting a special use permit to operate a childcare center on property located within the O-N-I zoning district. The property considered for approval is located on the northwest side of the intersection of Berkshire Road and West Anderson Street. The property is further identified as Johnson Killen, tax ID 1500419J. This time, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I move we open the public hearing.
Second. Favor, on my favor. Favor, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
All right, thank you. So this is a request for a special use permit to operate a daycare on a property at 861 Berkshire Road in the O-N-I office district, off O-N-I office and institutional district. And so this is, previous zoning text amendment makes this possible. So this is the location. It is off the Berkshire Road, behind the, I think it's Pine Needles Shopping Mall essentially. It's backed up by, I think it's Buffalo Creek behind it, R-28 zoning. And there's office institutional uses surrounding it, it's near the hospital. And here's just a chart listing the uses, I'm not going to go into it. So we're looking at a 1.17 acre parcel in the O-N-I district. It's an office building that's currently vacant, proposed use as a childcare center. This one will have town, water, sewer, and electricity. This is the current site plan, approved a number of years ago with landscaping. And just pay attention to the parking. So this is what they're proposing. They're proposing to utilize the same parking lot, adding a turnaround, which is one of the requirements in the supplementary standards. They will be, that's here. So they'll be displacing some existing parking, but they'll still have more than enough parking. They will be creating a child's play area behind the building. There's adequate space back there. Really, those are the primary changes to the facility beside some internal changes. So the applicant is adapting this building to a childcare center for up to 30 children. I talked about the parking drop-off. The play area will be a 22, roughly a 2,300 square foot play area. Shaded play is a requirement of the supplementary standards, so that will have to be shown on the plans, which isn't, isn't currently shown. There will be up to seven employees when at capacity. So when and if they have 30 students, there will be seven employees at any one time. They're proposing hours of operation from 6:00 a.m. to midnight, Monday through Friday. So they're going to be long hours. I think it's primarily to facilitate the hospital nearby. Part of the special use permit, one of the key supplementary standards states that this is a special use, so the council can set those hours of operation. So by approving this, you're agreeing to those hours of operation. And if there are an issue, that would be something to pay attention to. This proposed use requires nine parking stalls. There's 19 shown, so as I said earlier, there's adequate parking. They're not increasing impervious, so there's no stormwater management required. The existing ground sign will be modified, requiring an sign permit before they can do that. Staff believes, there's findings of fact required for a special use permit. Staff's findings are in italic here. We feel that the childcare center will not significantly change the site from what it is currently. There's adequate open space for the child's play area, adequate parking, and the hours of operation, we feel, will not impact the surrounding properties. We believe the childcare center will be in harmony as it is similar to other permitted uses in the O-N-I, such as schools, family care, family childcare homes. The surrounding properties are all to go but for one to the south. The use of this site for a childcare center will have no impact on the normal and orderly development or improvements of the surrounding properties. Utilities to the site will be unchanged from what currently exists. Adequate measures for egress and ingress and egress are already addressed through the existing site plan. It will conform to all current regulations. The proposal conforms to all plans with these next two findings. There's really no issue. So staff recommends approval of a special use permit, 1811, with the following conditions, that the landscape plan be updated to include a shaded shading area over the play area, that any plans identified in the landscape plan that you saw that are currently dead or missing be replaced, so just kind of sprucing up the place, and that a sign permit be obtained prior to any change to the sign out there for the childcare center. And with that, the Smithfield Town Council's requested to review the petition. Sorry, this is a mistake. To review, to review it against the findings of fact and make, make a decision.
Question, on that same road, is there not already a daycare center on that road?
I am not.
Is there not a child, I mean, is there not a Kitty College of Berkshire or something like that on that same road? Is there not?
Yes.
Is there? Which means it does, it means this not is inconsistent, it's not inconsistent, there's already one on that road. So I'm just saying, there's already one on Rockuside, the other side of the doctor's office.
Yeah, I don't know if there's any.
Yeah, there's another on the other corner of the street, on the other side. So, okay, I just want to verify. I thought that was the case. Yeah. Is it over there beside the, where the medical center was, I mean, the urgent care? Is that what it was, the old urgent care building? Is that what it is? Okay, I know exactly where it's at.
You get the five cars between them here? Mr. Stevenson, do you have anything else you would like to add?
No. In the end, Mr. Plante said, he says I'm going to operate a daycare, I should. So then came to see me to operate five star daycare in Smithfield. I mean, I really have a place to go. I used to own this building and sold it to the urgent care department. I bought it back, they helped me to get it. There's a location that is not, and they're blaming me because they put me in front of DOT. And the building is pretty old and has some asbestos in it. This was safe playground, sacred rest.
Do you notice they're going to be having similar operating hours? It's got this here from like six. Do you know what their current operating hours are?
I, I think they're pretty much the same as this one. As he said, they have a fair amount of people that do work shift work at hospital. They wouldn't be close by and they go, little young ones, normal, they can't analyze they do operate and like that, but they do accommodate the shift work people at hospital. And they do that now.
Good idea. Mr. Stevenson, one other question for you. Do you agree with the testimony that was presented by the planning director? Just as in all this time?
Or by who?
Hey, thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak for this and do this? Any other questions from the council? I'm going to entertain a motion to close the public hearing in a second.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second. A motion in a second, on my favor.
Aye.
Then when we have, this is, we have findings of fact.
Mayor, I move we approve the findings of fact, 1 through 8, is set forth on page 80 of our agenda.
I have a motion to say to approve findings of fact. Favor?
Aye.
Mayor, I move we approve the request with the recommendations, conditional recommendations is set forth on page 80 and 81 of the agenda.
Second. Second, on my favor. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. At this time, we will move on to our next public hearing. This is not a quasi judicial hearing, so therefore no need to have any questions sworn in for this one. Public hearing number four, annexation petition. Navajo Investment Company LLC is requesting to annex approximately 21.26 acres of land into the town of Smithfield's corporate limits. Property considered for annexation on the Allen Lake Road, about 1,900 feet, about 1,500 feet from here west central. I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion, move on to the public hearing.
Second. Second, on my favor.
Aye.
Thank you. So this is a Twin Creeks request for non-continuous annexation. Navajo Investment Company is actually the applicant. And they're requesting annexation of 32.79 acres. The applicant is also requesting town sewer and water utilities. I want to make a clarification here and an apology. When this thing started out, as you know, the town clerk was preparing all the certification of the annexation petition. And she started this report and at the last minute, I had more information for her because I was involved with it early on. And in future, I'll be doing these reports. So there is an error. She had put in the report the amount of land that's in the county for annexation. It's actually the town, the part in the county and in the town is requesting annexation. So the full 32.79 acres is what's being requested to come into the town. So that, I just want to make that clear. And we are improving our process since this is the first annexation that we've done and certainly done together. Property ID is 15I09011B. Again, 32.79 acres, 11.53 of that is in the ETJ. 21.26 is located in the county. The town portion of it, the ETJ portion of it, is zone R-28. The county zoning is AR agricultural residential. So if it does come into the town, we'll have to rezone that portion that's in the county to the town zoning district. Right now, the property is agricultural and underdeveloped. So on September 4th, the town passed a resolution, a resolution directing the town clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the petition, should the council wish to move forward with the annexation. And that petition was found sufficient. October 3rd, the council set the public hearing for tonight. Pursuant to legislation, the council will accept the public comments and consider the ordinance tonight for annexation. The ordinance may be adopted immediately or within six months. So this is the location. You can see here, it's, it's here, this portion is in the ETJ, this portion is in the county. It's approximately 12,000 square feet from the town in this location and almost 9,000 square feet to this location. So it is out, headed on the extent of our ETJ. Want me to move on to this slide?
Square feet?
Feet, sorry, feet.
Linear feet.
Linear feet. Did I say square feet? My apologies. So one thing I want to point out that the county, the portion in the county has vested rights with it. Recently, well, 2007, the whole property was, was preliminary planted and that, that plant fell through. And since then, the town extended its ETJ and it divided this property in two. I think the town did its best not to divide properties in two, but this one got missed, I think, because it looked like a property line, but it was a creek. So a portion of it stayed in the ETJ, a portion of it is in the county. So here we have the situation where now the developer has to, had to get preliminary plat approval in the county for the county portion and is going to be asking for plat approval in the town for the town portion. But they got, they got the county portion planted already, so it comes with vested rights, meaning it's, it's planted to the, the county's standards, not the town's. So the lot sizes are different. There's no sidewalks on the road like we would require. And I don't know fully the other differences between the town and county zoning districts. But that, that portion will come with some vested rights if the town annexes it. Any questions on that?
So you mentioned sidewalks. So our ordinance requires sidewalks within the subdivision.
Right, on one side of the road.
Is that, you're saying that's not going to be the case?
Is that, you're saying that's not going to be the case?
On their portion, they've already got it planted.
We could require it on our, the portion, the other portion, it's in our ETJ.
Oh, yes, on our, on our portion.
Basically, part of the subdivision would have sidewalks, and part of it could not.
Right.
Could not that be a condition for annexation, though?
Let's leave that to the bottom, I'm not entirely sure on that.
You don't have to vote for annexation, I think, or for that.
At the new one, I'm sorry?
You, you, I don't think you can put conditions on it. They may want to stand up here and tell you they're going to do it in a few minutes, because they have a right to ask you that, but, I mean, you can't pass it like a conditional use permit. You understand? So you can't pass it, this is a permit, condition, and you do it X, Y, and Z.
So, but, we could say no. And if they say we're willing to do this, then we could say yes.
Yes.
Okay. What's wrong with that?
Conditionary is here.
Yes. You know, and I don't know fully what other differences there are. I mean, lot sizes are different, you know, so the density is slightly different.
Oh, the lot size in that portion's seven thousand, and our ordinance requires lots to be fifteen thousand.
Right. All right, so I went through that. So the county portion has a sixty-two lot subdivision already planted. This, you've got to see through the hash here, but this is the only exhibit I had with the current county development layout on it. And this is what they were proposing prior to it being in the town. I think this section will actually change because it'll, it's now in the town. So this is not planted, this is what they originally proposed, this is pretty much what they planted this to. That makes sense? This was an exhibit showing left parts of the town, which is not, and it just had the development underlaid. A little hard to see, but it was the best exhibit I have.
And basically, they did flat for our portion?
They have not.
Um.
Move on?
Yeah.
Okay. So utilities, with annexation, Smithfield will provide, can provide sewer and water utilities. We have a first right of refusal, and I believe it was with a master meter on Johnson County service lines. Electricity will be Duke. There will be a lift station also required. The portion in the ETJ, the town, as I said, has a first right of refusals. Johnson County has requested that the town provide utilities for the entire portion regardless, they, they just wanted us to do it. And I wanted to point out, since, you know, when we first started this discussion, we thought we had a limit on, on non-continuous annexation, and upon reading the statute, the clerk found that there's an exception for the town of Smithfield, so we are not subject to that limit. So we can accept as much non-continuous contiguous annexation as we need, need or want. So the action we're requesting tonight is either to approve the non-continuous annexation petition and adopt ordinance four ninety-seven, table the decision for no longer than six months, or deny the annexation petition. And with that, I ask if you have any questions?
Questions from the council?
Mr. Henry. May I have a question? He just clarified the, the previous rule. Has our attorney reviewed that?
Bob agreed, he's reviewed that, and agreed that we are exempt from that requirement.
It's one of these things a lot of clerks.
Yeah, it is specifically these things. I was going to ask him a little.
Any other questions from the council?
I do have one question for a statement. It says there may be other non-conformities that go along with this. I think before we do anything, it'd be kind of nice to know for sure what the differences are.
Bob, Bob, this may be a question for you, but along the same lines, I guess the portion that's in the county's been platted, right? We don't, we don't have any, right? So we really don't know what we're getting at this stage. Is that correct?
I've not fully reviewed their plat and construction drawings, but, and I don't know for sure what the county setbacks are at this point.
So my, my, my question is, is we're being asked to annex this, but we don't know what we're annexing. Not appropriate thing to ask.
You've been asked to annex this, this property, and has the subdivision process been completed by the county?
It has.
And our portion hasn't. The portion that lays within our ETJ has not.
It is something that Stephen could, could know, could learn, if you're concerned about that.
Well, my concern is, is as part of annexation, we have to plot, supply services to that area, right? So police, fire, and public workers. I don't, I don't know what this subdivision's going to be, where that portion ought to lay, right?
Yeah, the other differences would be perhaps setbacks.
Right. So.
Sounds like it's going to be a more dense development, such as what Marston's going to do.
Yeah. But I guess that's one of my questions, and I think there was a statement in there that, I think there was stated in our agenda package that we can do this, you know, paraphrasing here, without much additional cost. What does that mean?
The clerk had, had discussed with, with all the different apartment heads, and they all basically agreed this would not be a problem for them to serve.
You'll have some additional costs with trash cans. That was one of the things that came up, we'd have to buy for everybody. But as far as labor costs, which is predominantly the issue, we do not see any additional labor costs, we don't see any additional infrastructure that we have to put in as far as buildings and things of that nature like, but there are some minor costs that go with any new subdivision.
Mayor, I have a manager, I mean, we'll put you in the list, that.
The list station would be bore by the development.
Any other questions?
I understand we don't think it's going to cost, but how many lots we going to have?
Well, there's sixty-two in the county.
We deserve a sixty-two lots for water, sewer, fire, police, and trash, and, and no cost? No additional cost to what we already pay?
Well, no additional cost outside of what we're going to be receiving. They'll pay for trash collection, they'll pay for water, they'll pay for sewer.
Mayor, I have a question. This is a, a, a.
I have not calculated that.
These single-family residential?
All single-family.
Stick it open.
Right. About sixty thousand.
Just clarification, what portion of this did you say is the county?
This portion's in the county, and there's a small creek or ditch located right here, and this is the portion that's in the ETJ. So this portion is not platted yet, this was what they were originally going to propose until they found out it was in the town's ETJ. And so they went ahead and platted the county portion and, and, you know, came, came to me with this as a sketch plan and said, we'd like to annex, and I haven't seen a, a sketch plan that meets our ordinance yet.
Just clarification, how, what area was all that total?
Both sides. It was in the beginning of my presentation, I've got, I've got thirty-three.
Thirty-two point seven-nine?
Right.
How many residential lots total that'd be?
I think it's about eighty to ninety. Again, I haven't seen the town's portion meeting our standards, so it'll be less than what's on the map now.
I'm not in alter, alter, be opposed to this, but I just feel like I don't have enough information to, and obviously, one grows a town, but.
Does the applicant, is he here, or anyone representing the mission, they'd like to come forward and speak?
I'm looking for him.
We have a question from the council. Am I here?
Doesn't look like it.
Gentlemen, we have a couple of options here. We can, obviously, it's pretty foundational what we know, but or we can table this decision no longer than six months, is that correct? In hopes that we get additional information, clarify some questions.
We need to close the public hearing first.
If we're willing to do that, yes. We can, obviously, have your options.
Anyone else wishing to speak at this time, for or against? Will please come forward to my phone.
I'm Pam Lanthe, and I'm not for or against this project, but I would like to ask that we table it for six months and actually run the numbers, and to see how much it's going to cost in actual numbers, and, because I'm an accountant, I like to work that way, so that's, that's what I would like to ask, so.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, obviously, we're not required to live six months.
Right, right, we can, we can bring it back before the six months, right? The no longer than six months. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Any none?
Maybe we can close the public hearing.
Second, all in favor? The pleasure of the council.
Mayor, I move we table this, but I, I want to table it, but I want, in fairness, in respect to the applicant, I think we need to move with all due speed and have this back before us, or at least in status by the January even.
Second.
I would say that the applicant probably needs to be present at the meeting.
You have a motion and second, lieutenant?
Ah. I ask specifically what information you want, and I will, I will try to find out as much as I can about that development, property tax, value.
I can work that out.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Did you get all the county specifications?
Yeah.
Thanks, Steve. This is, this is actually, oh, two, Last Investment LLC, correct? Advocate is requesting preliminary subdivision approval of a hundred and ten lot residential development on approximately a hundred acres of land located within the R-twenty-eight zoning district. Probably considered for preliminary subdivision approval, is located on the southwest side of the intersection between Swift Creek Road and Cleveland Road, and further identifying as Johnson County, max ID one-five-one-zero-eight-zero-two-zero. This is not a public hearing, is that correct?
We noticed.
I mean, it's a public hearing, but I don't. So.
We know it, we advertised it, but technically, it's not required by statute, and it's unclear in our code.
Okay. So am I supposed to open this public hearing or not?
I would say, oh, man, because we're going to let people speak anyway.
All right, so, was there any additional?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you. Sorry about that, there was a, a misunderstanding there. All right, so, this is a, not a question, it went to therefore, maybe for you wanting to be someone in this, but I, at this time, I will entertain the motion to open, all in. Who, mayor?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
All right, thank you. So as the mayor said, Last Investments is the applicant, it has a physical address, the current firm is at thirteen thirty-seven Cleveland Road, the owner, I'm not going to try to say the name, is listed here, it's in trust, proposing a hundred and ten single-family units, roughly ninety-seven point five-seven acres, R-twenty-eight zoning district. Will have town water with a master meter as an out-of-town customer, that's what they're proposing, onsite septic with Duke Electric as a provider. This is in the ETJ, they're not requesting annexation. The lot sizes are twenty thousand square foot, point four-six acres, up to sixty-seven thousand plus acres, the biggest lot being one point five-five acres. The phase-in is not clear, they've said likely twenty lots per year in phase one, but they indicated where on the site that would be, imagine it would start out by the road and build its way back. This is the site in relationship to the town, located right here, so it's right on the very edge of the town's ETJ, this is county, this is Cleveland Road, and this is Swift Creek Road. This is that aerial of the site with contours. So this is all the way already down here, within a hundred-year flood. There is a low ditch running through the center of the site with some pretty poor soils. There's a blue line stream that kind of starts and stops here, and a little bit of blue line stream over on this portion here. This is currently farmed, farm, farm field, this as well. There's some wetlands located on this side of the site, kind of between the blue line stream, I think it just kind of starts and stops with a wetland in between, just to give you an idea. And the whole site, more or less flows back this direction. The only thing I didn't mention is there's an existing cemetery located right here, and this is actually a platted cemetery, so there's, it's its own landlocked piece of property. Currently access to the cemetery, from everything I understand, crosses this property simply by, it had been allowed by just a verbal agreement, there's nothing formal. The developer had provided a survey that showed, whoops, yeah, it's right here, showed an easement in this location coming from Cleveland Road, but we have not found a recorded deed of easement at the courthouse, so we don't believe that's valid, and I think the applicant more or less has confirmed it's, it's not a valid easement. So one of the issues tonight is going to be the cemetery access. So this is the preliminary plat drawing. It has a, whoops, sorry, pushing one button. It has a single access off of Swift Creek Road in this location, a cul-de-sac located here, and another cul-de-sac located here. This is the ditch location, all the rear property lines of these lots kind of back right up to that ditch feature. I just want to point out, these are considered hook lots, so the lots here and here stretch around the back of these lots, over to this location, and over to this location, and it's really the developer chasing a septic site, because the soils are fairly poor in that area. Also, I want to point out, there's a stub street located right here. Our town code, as you probably know, requires lateral connections to adjacent properties. They had proposed another one down in this location, but it went right into the blue line stream, which didn't make a lot of sense to me, so I, I didn't require that, and in this location, it's also low and wet, so I don't see really an immediate need on the adjacent parcel if they were to develop. I don't see lots being right there, so it didn't make a lot of sense. This is the only one that made sense from a planning perspective. Yeah, you'll see tonight that one of the neighbors is opposed to that, so keep that in mind. So no annexations requested this time. Plan town water as an out-of-town customer. As I said, there's no, there's no remote annexation limitation. The town can refuse town utilities unless voluntary annexation, that is an option the town has, saying, you have to annex if you want our water. But if, if the town were to do that, the county is more than willing to provide that water. As a town, we, we have a double rate for out-of-town customers, they'll have a cheaper rate if they get service from the county directly. That's just something else to consider as we look, look at this plan. I mentioned the blue line streams, along that ditch in the center are poor soils, the soil borings have not been completed yet, there may be some lots, particularly in that center area, and particularly where they're chasing the. center area, particularly where they're chasing the septic sites, those lots may not work when, when the final data comes in, there might be some loss of lots as a result of septic conditions, or soil conditions. So this is really kind of the best-case scenario for the developer in terms of number of lots, some of those lots might be combined with other lots, and, and, or the cul-de-sac shortened, or open space increased, but it'll be no debt, more debt, it'll be less dense, if anything, than what you see on the plat. I mentioned the single street access in this location here, off of Swift Creek, this is recommended by the NC DOT, the developer proposed it, and he said he had a conversation with the DOT, I did reach out to DOT, and they said, that is the, the best location, and they are not recommending a secondary location because of sightlines, they were doing traffic counts out there, and this development is really right at the threshold for whether or not to require a traffic study, since DOT is already looking at the traffic requirements out there, and they made it clear that there will be a turn lane required, I didn't see, and they didn't see, a need for a traffic impact statement or study, because they're already looking into the issues and, and they're well aware of them, but I don't think any new information will come to light based on it. They will require an access permit, so the final, the final decision from the DOT will be made at that time. Planning Board was concerned about a secondary access, and in spite of the DOT saying they didn't want one, they did add a condition of approval, basically, basically asking for a secondary access with a crash gate, if, if it's possible, so that'd be an emergency access only, that had a gate that could be broken down by emergency services if the primary entrance gets blocked. They're proposing about 8,000 millimeter feet of public street, these will be DOT streets, 60-foot public right-of-way, 20-foot wide, 20-foot wide pavement service with, with drainage channels on either side, they are complying with the town's 5-foot public sidewalk requirement on one side of the street, it was a little bit difficult in some cases because of the ditch, so they got a little creative with small pieces of pipe, segments of pipe near the intersections to make the intersections work better, so we weren't able to accommodate the town's desire for a sidewalk on one side of the street, and it's also consistent with DOT standards. When this plat comes to final plat, there will be a, a park dedication requirement, this code says 1/57 of an acre of dedication is required for each dwelling unit, or a fee in lieu, we have no master plat that says we want to park in this area, so fee in lieu is what we'll be getting based on the fair market value of the 1/57, based on that map. The developer is proposing to leave the 100-year flood area on the low end of the site, here, as open space, and they have provided an accessway, should there be any need for maintenance or anything else to get to that, you know, down trees or whatever it might be, that will be under HOA ownership, that corridor is 20 feet wide, and again, it's mostly wet beyond that, the rear lot lines there. I mentioned the access to the cemetery, we have added a condition of approval that the applicant would need to prove a recorded easement or provide access to the cemetery. The development is less than the 15% of the site area, though, for the pond, it's exempt from ponding requirements, I do want to point out, you're going to hear tonight, that one of the neighbors said there's a title issue, and that the property may not, the property lines may not be where they are shown down in the low area, if that is the case, and this development loses a lot area, there may be some additional stormwater features that are required to meet stormwater requirement, because basically they have less land and the same amount of impervious, and it could trigger some, some modifications to that. The developer will, will be purchasing that to then buy down credits. So I mentioned earlier, these, these hooklots, our UDO does not allow them, they're also sort of a nuisance concern, this is in the county, this will be in the county, because it's not going to be proposing annexation, the county doesn't really do code enforcement, so if there are complaints about lawn grass, tall grass, weeds, they're not going to go out and address those concerns, we actually get a lot of those concerns, and have to tell them that you're in the ETJ, call the county, but the county does not do anything, so we think it's, it's a bad, a bad situation, because kind of on the site, out of mind, those are kind of, part of the lot is tucked away behind another lot, and very well could become a nuisance issue, even though there's septic sites proposed for that, these are also probably the sites that are most likely to disappear as lots altogether, because of the soils, we don't know yet, so, again, these lots do not meet our UDO standards and should be eliminated, and there's a condition of approval to that effect. Just want to point out, landscaping and tree preservation not required for single-family development, the lighting plan will come from Duke, but not until later, and they will have to comply with town standards, they've not submitted a phasing plan, but they're proposing 20 lots in the first phase, erosion control will be reviewed by the state, and no signs are being proposed, if they do propose any development signs, they will have to come to the town for a permit.
Go over those odd shit lots here.
Sure.
Explain what they're doing.
Okay.
Most of those in the county are over water and sewer, that's what that is, septic?
Yeah, these are septic lots, and so they're chasing septic sites, there's some good, they think there might be some good soil here based on preliminary...
Just in the grass common area, all over the county.
Yeah, I know, but it doesn't meet our UDO, and, and it can be a nuisance concern, because people don't, they may not know that part back there, because it's not, not used, but they just don't comply to our standards, so we've got a condition of approval saying that they need to be modified. The planning board, as I said, they did, did have a concern about a lack of a phasing plan, and they were concerned about a single entrance off of Swift Creek Road, and they recommended that a crash gate entrance be investigated, and, you know, the town that put went in, the county's okay with a crash gate, they're not okay with a full second entrance, that's going to be used all the time because of sightlines, as I said earlier, if this is a condition, this condition is in my listed condition of approvals, so this is one that, that the town board should, the town council should consider and just pay attention to, because it's not what's on the plans. And also, there's a condition added about, about annexation, but again, if we don't, if the town chooses not to approve this because of, to, if the town were to try to require annexation, what am I trying to say here? There's, I was just going to say, there's a condition about annexation, we'll get to it when we get there, I can't remember exactly what it says. Staff received notice from an adjacent landlord, and she'll probably come up to speak tonight, she wanted the removal of that street E going into the adjacent property, she does not want a plan for future development, she does not want that street there, it's unclear to me whether she wants just the road gone, or if the whole road and right-of-way be taken away as well, so the town council should consider, if they are considering removing that road, does that mean the road and the right-of-way, or just the road? Her concern is that people may park there for hunting or other concerns and access her property, it still might be wise for the town to have right-of-way there, should development of her nearby, of course, that is also county next door, but for, you know, there's still people maybe want to drive from the county to the town, into the subdivision, utilizing their local streets. And cemetery access, according to the, the neighbor, she says the access should be fully permitted in the subdivision, her family never approved any encroachment for, for access under her property, and we found no deed of easement in the county records. She also would like the existing tree line buffer to be preserved, and that was on the survey. All right, I lost, I lost a couple of conditions of approval, I'm just going to read them from my, my report. All right, so the first condition of approval, staff is recommending is that the suitability of onsite septic be proven for each lot in the subdivision prior to construction, again, there's some poor soils, and we just need to make sure that soil borings bear that out, and the subdivision reflect the conditions on the ground, that the preliminary plat be revised to eliminate the hooklots, that's lots number 92 and 93 on the preliminary plat, that the HOA documents be submitted for review by the town attorney prior to final plat, and that those documents ensure HOA ownership and maintenance of the common amenities and open space, we'll see that 100-year flood playing area, that a lighting plan be submitted to the town prior to construction, that a phasing plan be provided, that the applicant obtain an NC DOT permit for access to Swift Creek Road prior to construction, that the applicant provide proof of legal access to the cemetery, and I might want to add to that condition, is that they provide legal access to the cemetery. That the applicant provide emergency entrance on Swift Creek Road with a crash gate, and actually, I had, I think, right, right before this published, I took off condition on regarding annexation, there was a discussion we had on staff that the county will provide utilities if the town doesn't, so I just dropped that whole condition.
When you say utilities, you meant water?
Yes.
Because it's the only utility they're asking for us.
That's correct. So if, if for any reason the town or say, no, we're not going to provide you that, the county will be more than happy to pick it up.
Because they're already providing everything else.
It's in the county.
The county's providing everything else except for water.
Well, it's septic. It's septic.
Right.
But they, they're, they've got lines there, they can provide the, they can provide the water, the only reason we would be doing this to the center RTJ, RETJ, we have first rights to refuse it.
Our sewer?
Hmm?
How far away is sewer?
Sewer is, I think about a mile away, so it was difficult and expensive to serve with town sewer, and we can't require them to run sewer that far.
Let me say, though, from my understanding of West Smithfield, was, had septic tanks when they first started, and the population in West Smithfield grew to the place where the septic, the septic tanks were inefficient, and it was, the sewage was actually floating up into yards, which would happen in this density here too, over time period, so then if they decided to be annexed by Smithfield, Smithfield would have to provide some type of sewer or something to them, because, I'm just saying, you have to take consideration if they were to, I mean, so I don't think it's a great idea, but that's beside the point, that's not mine to say, Susan's saying, but, I'm just saying, down the road, they're going to have problems, because eventually, those things fill up.
Yeah, the, the standards meet our, I mean, their, their development meets our standards, and it is...
For certain factors.
Yep.
I mean, usually, I mean, septic systems, plants can have a repair area that's also covered that's a, a...
Right. Primary and secondary site. Right, as, as they go through the soil boring verification, at that point, they'll provide a drawing that shows primary and secondary sites for all three, and if some sites can't have septic, those lots are going to go away.
Maybe it's a required buffer between uses.
There is no required buffer for single-family and agriculture, there's no buffer requirement for those land uses, they're both considered basically residential districts. Now, if they were business or industrial, there's a buffer requirement, or even multifamily.
Doesn't mean we can't require water, though, does it?
It could be a condition of approval.
Based on the request, they want to provide water infrastructure without annexation, who's being asked to pay for it?
The developer will pay for any, any infrastructure they're, they're building for that, including a master meter. So there's going to be a master meter on county lines, it'll just be metered by the town and billed double.
Any other questions at this?
The segment you've got here on page 115, that says, under annexation, it says, this has an impact, because they're not expecting the, the, whatever, it says, the town has the ability to restrict access to town utilities to only developments that request annexation, however, in this case, if the town refuses to provide water service, the county will be willing and able to provide the services, so the point is, this is a some of the issues as far as that's concerned, but the question is, are we going to give our, I guess my question is, are we going to give our valuable resource, that we're working to provide a brand-new water facility, building additions, so that we have the capacity for those people who want to be part of Smithfield in the future, are we going to allocate that to those who don't want to be part of Smithfield in the future? That's a concern that I have, you understand?
Yes.
Because, you know, we're, we're, it's hard for us to tell our citizens that we're building an expansion water, because we're going to need it for our town, and then we give it to other people who refuse to be part of the town, so I'm just, I have a concern about that, as far as that, I mean, my concern, I just would let the county have the whole thing then, if that's the case, because I just, I'm saying, I have a hard time justifying to our citizens who want to know about the water, and we say we're going to, we need it for our town, so, we're not in the business of giving, of selling water to the county, we do that because we can, but if that's all we're doing it for, we don't need to build our facilities that we know we need for our future growth, so we can't, I don't think how we can justify giving water to a group that doesn't want to be annexed, so that's just...
You know, the, the town, planning department and administration, we're working on a policy for annexation, so that, you know, what's expected by future developers, what do they need to ask for, or what are they supposed to do if they want town water, and it, it is a request for annexation, for, for instance, so that we have consistent ask, and then the town can make that decision where the priorities lie, and the issue is, do we want to give water when they're not annexing, or if we choose to deny annexation, do we still want to require town water, or refuse it, let the county do it? Those are valid concerns, and it's really, I think, a council decision.
You don't know whether they want annexation or not?
They don't want annex, they did not want to annex.
Any other questions at this? Not anyone in the audience wishing to speak? The applicant?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Sue Avra, I live at 313 North Second Street in Smithfield, and I'm going to go over some of my concerns, some of them have already been addressed, I am the daughter of Sandy T. Avra, I have some concerns with the proposed subdivision development, which adjoins the Avra Farm. First, I think it's already been addressed, but there was a mistake on the map that had an easement on our property, and there are no easements on our property. Next, I want to give you a little bit of our family history, so it will be clear why we have every intention to keep our property a working farm, our farm is what is left of 6,000 acres from a royal land grant, and purchased from the Lord Proprietors in about 1702, the land has been in the Avra family for a long time. We are also registered as a North Carolina century farm, 100 years of farming heritage, we intend to keep our farm a working farm, and this leads to some of our other concerns, and I think this was addressed as well, but I request that there would be a buffer or a fence as a barrier along the property line for protection from attractive nuisances, such as a farm... such as a farm pond, the creek, farm equipment, including tractors, plows, et cetera, other vehicles, and simple things like holes in the ground that will be, that we will be held liable for if someone trespasses. There needs to be a permanent fence. It's difficult enough to keep random people off the land, and now there will be over 100 homes with no barrier between their backyard and our farm. Next, I ask you to consider putting guidelines in place for rural land conservation issues such as wind and soil erosion. We use trees as windbreaks on our farm. I request that a tree line in a buffered area is left in place on their property for a windbreak to prevent wind erosion. The roots also act to prevent soil erosion. And there would be no cost to leave the trees that are already there. And I'd also like to point out that the trees used as a windbreak are not a barrier. And the pictures, my sister passed out, number five, six, and seven, shows the trees that are already there, and some of the pictures show where there are spaces where there are no trees and it's just open area. And last, the proposed road that leads to our property line, it was that small road that you pointed out. It's my understanding that the town required the developers to put a road leading to our property for future development. There is no need for that road because we intend to keep a working farm and have no plans to develop. I request from the town that the road be removed and that no road would lead to our property. A road would cause easy access and possible liabilities. The town asked the developer to add the road, so I'm asking the town to ask them to remove I also encourage you to look at the voluntary agricultural district's guideline that encourages preservation and protection of farmland. Hope you can address my concerns and that we can have some win-win outcomes.
I'm Ellen Gemmell, and I live on 207 Hancock Street. I was concerned, and I wanted to make sure that you had pictures so that you could visibly see the encroachment that could have happened and the danger that could have happened. You can see the property line, I mean, the stakes that were in the first four pictures. There were two that showed a pond. The pond backs up, and those trees are not buffers. There's no, I mean, they're windbreaks. They're not barriers. Because a kid in curiosity is going to come over, they're going to be, we're going to have 100 people that are going to have, you know, two cars and a family, and you don't know how many kids are going to be in there, but they're curious. You're not going to say, hey, stay off the, you know, the other people's property. You know, trespassing. They're going to go over there because there's nothing to keep them from. And when the town starts going into the country, I noticed on the, when you, when the town has property that is developed like homes or townhouses, and they're against farmland, there's not the concern that a working farm that this is, and you have to look at it a little different. And I think that's why the 2018 USDA Farm Act has included this voluntary agricultural district into their new proposal for this bill because of the fact of encroaching farmlands, and there's nothing there to protect us. You're leaving us with all the liability. All you're doing is saying what you think needs to happen. They're coming in, building homes, and when they finish building those homes, they're out of there. We're going to still be there, and we're going to have to deal with what you've left. So you have to put some type of barrier there if you're going to do this.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Ellen, I live on 107, going to Lake Clayton. And I'm in concern at this time, as she's passing out the pictures, is we do have to access that cemetery down there, and right now, how we have been accessing is from the Swift Creek Road. Yeah, Swift Creek Road. So now, in all of that, we're trying to figure out where do we fit in and how we're going to get to that cemetery? Because we've been maintaining that cemetery since 2010, and that's where we found, that's where our ancestors were buried, and you know, they were, my grandmother's there, my great-grandmother's there, my great-great-grandmother's there, so they're really, you know, ancient hammers.
How do you get to it? How do you get to it now?
We get into it from the Swift Creek roadside, like coming off of Cleveland. The stoplight has been put there, and we make a right, and we go down into the field, and it's in the back.
You walk down there or drive?
We drive slowly down there.
Just perpendicular to the road?
Well, actually.
Can I pull the area off?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that showed.
Quick, and on Cleveland, you can look from Cleveland, before you get to the stoplight, you can look down and see the sign.
Is this, you can kind of see some field roads on this drawing, coming down here. Is that how you get there?
Okay, from State Farm.
Yeah, I'll show you out here. So it's like, there's a field road that comes off of Swift Creek here, and then turns down, and heads right here towards the cemetery. Is that how you get there?
That's how we get there. We get there, State Farm, if we're coming from Cleveland, going towards Smithfield, we take that stoplight, this new stoplight there. We take that stoplight at the right, and then we take a short right into the field, and then we go down into that cemetery. That's how we get there. So that's how I understand, I think, and we're just, that's how I made a concern, I didn't know how do we get there. We can't pop our cars and take our tools there because that's going to be a hard job. That's going to be one thing to do. I'm afraid of that.
And before they made that turn to go to, we had to turn to go to Swift Creek. It was a road, it was a path right on the side of Cleveland Road that we used to turn into there until they stopped it, and then they put a stoplight there. Because we used to turn right beside a backup on, but it's not there anymore. So it used to be a path right there, and they took it out once they put the stoplight there, but that's where it used to go in there to get to the cemetery.
But I just, who put the, I noticed there's a fence around the graveyard. Did y'all put that up?
He did, 2012. He put it in, he put it in, he missed being, you know, so he could come this way.
Good.
My name is Richie Hines. I'm representing the applicant, so actually, out of the country, could not be here tonight. I live at 630 Aiken Parkway in Fuqua Arena. What I'm trying to do, I'll be glad to answer any questions. I've taken some notes as folks have stood up to speak, and I'll try to address them as I noted them. As far as the cemetery easement, that was shown initially on the, on the drawing because there was a map that the surveyor found. So the easement was shown in accordance with how the map was drawn up. It wasn't until later that we found out it was not actually a deed recorded to go along with the map. We are, of course, more than willing to provide access that's going to work for the folks who are maintaining the cemetery, visiting the cemetery. It can either be through the subdivision. We could keep the easement shown off of Cleveland School Road. Right now, it's, I think, a 30-foot easement, 15 feet on the applicant's property, 15 feet on the adjacent property owner, as it was shown in the map. We can remove it from the adjacent property owner, just keep it on our, the applicant's property as well. Just whatever works out better. Access may be easier through the subdivision than off of Cleveland Road, and that's something we could definitely work with you on and take that into consideration. As far as a buffer or fence, I don't believe the town has a requirement to buffer residential subdivision use from, from the adjacent property. The applicant, though, is more than willing to leave a buffer of trees on that rear property line. It's their common practice. The applicant will also be building the houses, is what the plan is. It's their common practice to leave a buffer down side lot lines, rear lot lines where they can. It's not their practice to go clear cuts, and so it's their intent to leave those trees at the rear line, which will count as a windbreak, will help keep that soil intact, so will help with erosion, but that is their intent.
When you say rear, what do you mean? The back part of subdivision or the rear of all lots?
It would be. They'd be willing to leave the trees that are there now.
Is there going to be any fencing around any of those properties? That's what I'm, now, there's some subdivisions build fences around their whole subdivision, like thing, like a barrier. I didn't know if you were doing that.
I don't think the applicant plans to fence the, you know, the limits of the subdivision. Of course, individual homeowners mind.
Right, right.
But the applicant doesn't plan to.
When you said the applicant planned to leave trees along the property line, if there's no recorded buffer though, and I bought the property, are my trees to cut down at that point? I could cut them down right up to the property line, buddy. Correct?
I'm no attorney, but I would think so, yes, sir. I was just stating for the right, it's not the applicant's intent.
Right, I understand.
Yeah.
That's something you couldn't fix.
That's right, that could be fixed. There could be an easement that's recorded along those, of those lots to preserve those. That's right. And as far as the substrate, if the town is willing to waive that substrate requirement, as was pointed out, the reason we showed it was because it was a requirement. If the town was willing to waive that requirement, then that'll, that'll go away. That's no problem at all.
That's a, that substrate was 60-foot as well?
Yes, sir. 60-foot line.
If we waived the 60-foot street, would, then you could put in a 20- or 30-foot access to the cemetery between lots 14 and 15, or 13 and 14, and you really wouldn't have any of that loss of lot space. Actually, you gain some.
Yeah, it would definitely be absorbed into it. And that's something, yeah, that's something we could certainly look at. I think question about how the septic systems will be permitted. Johnston County is currently evaluating the soils on the site for their suitability for septic tank systems and repair systems. So I think it was a question of how that would happen. There will be a system and a repair on each lot, so that if one system failed, there will be a repair system in place. That's, preliminary soils investigation was done. Right now, the county is actually out there with the soil scientists, and they're investigating each individual lot as it's state. There will be changes to the layout, I expect. Not every lot will, will have the soils we anticipate, so there may be a lot or two that shift, and there honestly may be a lot or two that's lost, but that's being determined right now.
This isn't a, this is just a computer manner. You've not surveyed anything yet.
The boundary has been surveyed, yes, sir.
But the lots have not been, because that's just a computer.
They have been, that's right. The lots have been rough-staked. If you were to go out there today, you would see stakes out there representing the property corners. Yes, sir.
What if you went in, and could you go in and add a 20-foot buffer behind each lot and move that as part of the open common space for the HOA?
I would like to, I'd like to consult with the health department just to make sure. I don't think they'll need that outer 20 feet, but some kind of easement, some preservation easement, I think, can be worked out. The width of it, I would, I would, I'd want to check with the health department first just to make sure. I don't think that they'll need that outer 20.
You worry about health department, call it out.
Making sure that they don't need anything in that outer 20 for the, for the septic systems.
And so my understanding is that you said that the owner has, the owner has no desire to annex or be annexed anytime?
That's correct. When we first started this process, we investigated that possibility. The utility, my understanding was that the town would probably not be in favor of extending utilities to the site because of the expense of it. And when I was asked to investigate the feasibility of the owner extending to the town utility, it was not a viable project. And so our, our understanding was that we could, we cannot have to worry about the sewer. We, the town could serve us with water, and the health department in Johnston County will take care of the septic systems, and so that's the route we chose. We just recently found out, I think as, as staff did, that there was an exception that we weren't aware of that could, that would allow the council or the town to annex property. There's no limit to it. That was, that was not our understanding when they proceeded, when they secured a contract with me to go ahead and prepare plans. Because at this point, we have, the construction drawings are being reviewed by the different agencies, so they, they've contracted with me to prepare a full set of plans. Going back now would require, a lot of that work would be, it would be useless if we had to then consider adding sewer. It would change the whole dynamic of what's going on.
Well, now, we allow, don't we allow, we allow sewer, septic tanks in the city?
We don't prohibit them.
That's what I'm saying, we don't prohibit them, so with the fact that, if that's a, what I'm saying is, so you have to look at, one of the things that was mentioned tonight was that all these peoples who live in this new subdivision, there's nobody going to be watching after them after you last leave. I mean, there's nobody. If the next door neighbor goes through weeds or the trees, the county ain't going to come in and say nothing about it. So there's nobody's going to be watching them at all. So your subdivision, the people living in the subdivision could, over time, actually, the subdivision could become dilapidated potentially. And I'm saying it is, but there's nobody watching. That's one of the benefits of the town, that we do provide their services too, that we make sure people abide by those ordinances. So there's some value add to be annexed into the town's Smithfield besides just providing water and, and, you know, sure, the services, police protection, probably that's true. So I'm just saying, it's something that I would, I would, I would encourage you to take it back to the landowners and talk about that, because, you know, you start building houses, and you're building them in phases, and the first group gets in there and somebody didn't do what they wanted to do, that's probably a detriment to building the rest of your houses.
Right. And along those same lines, they, for years, have utilized a management company for their homeowners association. They say when they set up those agreements, they could even stipulate the height of the grass, so as, as properties, but, you know, if they look like they're trending towards something that's not going to be suitable, and it's going to be against what the covenants are on the homeowners association, the management company steps in and handles that. They have a history with the management company and, you know, have said that that's been very satisfactory agreement. So hopefully, some, some of that, if that's a concern.
So, so, again, come back to the same thing, so the point is, they're not planning on annexing, been annexed.
At this time, they're not, that's right.
I have, my concern is, is obviously, I certainly understand and appreciate that this landowner has the right to do all their property, but I also want to respect the neighboring property and their use. And vacant land is becoming, there's a shortage of vacant land these days. Everybody's looking to go walking in a field or in the woods, and so their concerns are very valid to me. And what I would hope is that you, the owner, could work with this neighboring, neighboring owners and work out a plan with a buffer. And I realize you're never going to probably be able to reach even on everything, but I think there is certainly a compromise here to protect the integrity of the farm and also enhance and protect the integrity of what your owner wants to do.
And I think you're 100% right. I agree with you, and the owner, we did reach him prior to them going out of town. They're okay with leaving a buffer. I think what's to be worked out is the width of it. Are we, you know, are we talking 10 feet, 15 feet? But they're okay with leaving a buffer.
And that buffer, are we really talking the whole side there or just the back half?
I think that's something that can be addressed with the. I think that's something that can be, uh, addressed with the, with the adjacent owners.
The trees are not, people still don't walk around the property. The trees, the trees are in right and so forth. We go through the pictures, there's, there is a pond back there that has, I mean, their property line is nothing bare down. There's gonna be a backyard and there's gonna be a pond and, um...
I understand.
...it's a big...
I understand, but that, but, but that's true no matter where you live. I mean...
But they're held liable for crime.
Well, if I have a pool in my backyard, I'm held liable unless I put up my own fence.
Are you saying you want a fence? We call them buffer trees.
Sir.
We call them a buffer trees. So would you say buffer, you, you want a fence, right amongst?
Right. Both the trees are, are...
I understand.
And so it's called farmland. He's going to weather it without that. He's gonna continue to have farmland. We are not the only farm. The leaves are mixed up. He's, if he's on the other side of their property and they cut down the trees that are in here, he doesn't have any buffer to look at on the other side. So we feel like this is something that if you're in, going in the farmland, you're gonna have to think about the people either putting the profits together or gonna have to have buffers and something that's going to protect the farm as well as protect the people in the subdivision. And a barrier is the only way that's gonna do that as far as people walk around. But the trees are also variable, so.
Sure.
Do y'all have any plans about a fence of any kind? I mean, that's just not much y'all had.
Message. This, I'm, I'm honestly the first, tonight was the first I heard about, uh, request for a fence.
I took this fence off. This is a farm fence, but it's got more board. It's not something that's gonna take maintenance. That's the thing that we were trying to find, something that was gonna take maintenance.
Right.
A fence that's, um, you buy from others, it's gonna be maintained. So in the hallway or in the patio or something else.
Have you not really noticed to, to the actual subdivision, you just want a fence? Is that what you're saying?
I want a barrier for children not to get hurt. I want a barrier for people not to move my property and trespass. And this is, this property...
But are you talking about the, I mean, what, the extent of the fence?
It's still a long, I'm talking about the property. It's a long fence, but it's less than...
Talking about hogwash, huh?
Yeah, for the legal property. That's...
That's what's there now, but it's old and it's broken down. It doesn't have any, it's not deterring anybody. And the pond is there where that cross up is. Their property line is from here to there, and that's the pond. Over here, there's nothing there. If you're, you're going into where we were driving past, so there's, there's no trees or anything. There's no, there's no tree buffer or anything there. So I know it's, it's, um, we tried to figure out things like we thought that you would give more land, which we took the road away. Um, the trees are going to actually benefit the property because it's gonna look like it's, it's got green space there and it's mature green space.
It's hard, sorry to interrupt, but you, you have an idea of...
Right, and, and...
The joint about the owner harvesting, right? Legitimate, you know, less, um...
The entire charge.
Trees and, 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 be like speaker.
I would.
Which one of these were? This one? Uh, my, my brother-in-law, Andy Gill, he just brought up an interesting situation that we need to be aware of. At the creek, there's mussels in that creek that are in the protective. Didn't you say protection, that the mussels were protected and they had to be? So if you get over there and you put too much sewage back there, it's gonna kill those mussels. So y'all, y'all need to be careful of that 'cause it's a federal protection. Is that right? Okay. I just wanted you to be aware of that. But anyway, we don't want to get rid of the good parts of this world. You ever need to do something?
Can you, can you, anyone else wish to see more or against?
Your question, I mean, I mean dishes right in the middle, water, civil. I'm asking you.
Can you come to the floor, please?
The floor?
Yes, sir. Up here to the microphone.
I, I, I've got a dollar right there. I just want to ask something, but you gotta have twenty-three buffer with dishes. You realize that's a trick. Twenty-three on each side of the ditch, really popular.
Only if there's rock, air, and buffer in the inside. Uh, that's not a rock, air, and buffer.
That dish is, any dish, you gotta have twenty-three buffer.
I completely disagree. And then, you know, you talk about seven lines.
Yes.
This is, this is buffer.
So, so I don't, I don't wanna get into the debate. Sorry about, sorry. I don't wanna get into the debate back before who's right, who's wrong, right? Right? Twenty, twenty, twenty stated, it's a process, but that's why we have a planning department here to make this.
He's just not ready to be able to do more.
Look, I just wanna point out, the blue line streams I pointed out are really located in this area, here right here. They need to be buffered. Those are the features that need to be buffered.
Anyone else? More or against? Being good? Pleasure, counsel. Motion to, please, a couple of years?
I'm a little close to him.
Have a motion and second, please, a couple of years, all in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, I wonder if, if we need to allow the property owners and the owner and engineer, uh, have a few weeks to discuss these things and see if they can work out a compromise. Um, I, I don't know if that's been agreed with everybody, but, well, we make a decision.
So I'll, I'll ask the veteran of the applicant, is that something that you would desire to do? I, I, I guess from your comments that the developer is out to him.
I know they're anxious to move forward, but...
I know this project's been a work for, for a long, long time, right? But, but again, I would pay for it to halt tonight if there's, if there's something that, or we could pass, right? But I would hate for it to fall if there's something that broke out to the property owners and developers. Sounds like we, we may be able to do that if there's some discussions that, that I, I... Agreement with that?
I'm moving table this till December 8th. Is that, or you, do we go January?
Um, he said the phone, I mean...
Okay.
I'll say.
No motion and a second to table this request until December 8th. I'll make a statement. Just, Stephen, will you work with the, um, developer and the representatives of the developer to try to coordinate some of those?
We'll address, I'll have to address the cemetery access and those other issues as well.
Right, yeah, yeah, I think, um, then you'll have property owners, we can schedule a meeting and facilitate it here.
It sounds to me like the real issue is will be buffer fence. I think, I think the sub-approach and access to cemetery is something that's probably...
It'll be easy.
Yeah, I think.
We have, we have recently approved a subdivision that did not have the sub-house to, to, if you're a property owner, you know, in our, um, our witness, you have that authority to... Thank you, Stephen. Okay, gentlemen, we'll move on to citizens' comments. Anyone wishing to speak here in citizens' comments, please come forward.
I, uh, listen Washington and, um, first I want to thank y'all, uh, the board for letting me come into my neighborhood and pave the, the street on Bridge Street. But they left it to me, I, I think they need to come back again. They left a pile of stuff, uh, payment, whatever you wanna call it, right down the corner, which could be used because in my street, you know, I live on the color side. And that, I guess in, in fact, I know they went down one side of the street and came back on the other, right? But in, in between is like a little trench. When it rained, we had to rain the last few days and the water standing in the streets. My house, you know, where I live was kind of flat on that side. So the water just rushing into my yard again. And I'm just tired of all that water. If they're gonna do the streets, it's pretty tired. And planned it, they did because it needed to be done. But they need to come back and redo it because there's quite a few cold, uh, areas in the street that hold in water. And we haven't had any real hard rain, but if we did, I'm gonna, you know, in my area, it's gonna be kind of rough to get in and out. And first of all, when they came to pay, we were not notified that it was gonna be in there that day. And when I came going home, it had to lock down. So I feel like if you're gonna go into a street, it should notify the people that live there so they can make arrangements if they have to go out or, or whatever. Because you don't wanna drive on a, but, you know, they just put it down and you can't drive on it. So, um, but I'm glad it did it. But I do think, I, I, this was last Wednesday, I think it was. And the pile of stuff is still on the corner, uh, whatever they used it, black, uh, what's it, tar, whatever it is. There's a pile there. So if it, it's gonna stay on the corner, why not put it on the street? So clean, you know, cover up the holes. So I just wanna bring that to y'all's attention and, um, and maybe you can get them to come back out there and sweep it off.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can you take a look at that? It's probably the leftover pile in Washington.
The what?
The leftover pile was probably in the other side or something. I don't have, but let me, let me go take a look at all, all of your issues that you just addressed. I just piled whatever.
All right.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Steve Reed. I'm the staff writer for the Johnsonian News. Before that, I was the news editor for the Selva News and Princeton News Leader. And before that, I worked for Mickey Lamb covering Smithfield Town Council meetings. So I see some familiar faces and there's some new faces. Uh, but we are trying to bridge the gap that was created by the departure of the Smithfield Herald. And we are, uh, making a, an emphasis beginning this month to, to beef up the, the Smithfield coverage in our paper. And that's why I'm here and I'll be here every month, just like I was years ago when I was working for Mickey. And, uh, I would just, uh, you're going to see some, uh, so if you haven't seen it yet, you're gonna see some racks on the streets in Smithfield with our papers in them. And we also have online subscriptions, but, uh, just, uh, this is very, very important, uh, to our company. And anything that we can do to promote what is happening in town of Smithfield, uh, please contact us. Uh, let us know when we do a good job and when we fall short, uh, let us know that too. We'd appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And I would like to get an interview with you.
All right. We can do that as well.
I had read your article, yeah, but I'm gonna go ahead and say you do a great job by the fact that you're even here.
I sure am.
So, thank you.
Anyone else? Move on to the concessions. Motion to approve the concessions.
I'll make a motion.
Motion to second to approve. We'll move on to business items now, just a side of number one. Consideration applicable to adoption resolution number six thirty-one in the upset bid process for property located at nine sixteen third avenue according to General Statute one sixty-eight dash two sixty-one. Enter, turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, during the August council meeting, we discussed the possibility of selling a lot at nine sixteen third avenue. Uh, the lot was something that we inherited as a result of a condemnation several years ago. The lot's been sitting there empty. We were approached by a property owner in the area through a Realtor to, uh, purchase the property. We went through this in August as the, the different types of things we can do to sell real property. And the council settled up an upset bid process. During that meeting, I was tasked with getting with this person, the Realtor, um, and trying to negotiate some type of starting bid prop, bid amount. We have done that. We have settled out a starting bid of sixty-five hundred dollars for a lot. Uh, this is just a starting bid. Um, there's a resolution on page two hundred and two hundred and one that we need to prove so that we can begin the process, advertise the process, and move forward with the upset bid. Now, if the council's not happy with whatever the final bid is, they can reject all bids should they choose. In order to start the process, we need the council to approve the resolution as attached.
Did my, was, was this a property that we, the house?
Yes, it is. Uh, the house has been removed. It's an empty lot. Um, here's the location of it, as you can see on the map. Um, I'll show you a little bit more of the property. Let's see, uh...
The next question while you're getting that is, what is, you know, do you know how much we have vested in that?
I do not. It was done a long time ago. I can't find a lot of records on any costs involved with, with the town. Um, you can see that where the lot sits, it's an empty lot. There's nothing on it. It's got an empty lot to the, what would be the east of it, um, and then a property, uh, over two lots to the west. Um, from an aerial point of view, looks like this, um...
While you're doing that, uh, do you know what the tax value is and do you know the size of that lot?
Ten two fifty is the tax value.
Yeah.
Ten to fifty.
Ten to fifty.
It is, it's not a non-conforming lot that we know of, is it?
No.
In fact, when we were doing condemnations, we were having trouble selling lots in that neighborhood.
And lots is right here.
Sell that lot would be nice.
Um, it doesn't do us a whole lot of good to keep it, just paying the money. It'd be nice if someone could actually use it. Well, the upset bid process was approved by the council, so we'll follow that. Uh, we have, we have to approve the starting bid at sixty-five hundred dollars and then we'll advertise it as that. People have a right to come in and up that amount. Um, we go through this process of upping the amount, re-advertising until we don't get any more bids. You know, the final bid is what we bring back to you, see if that's something you wanted, etc. Each time they have to post a bond, um, if they're going to increase the bid amount, so we know that there's, they're legitimate. I'm moving approve resolution number six thirty-one being requested.
Second. Want to business items to make a word to fifty, Edward's amount of about thirty-two thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars? Contract approval for the removal of the U M S pool and adjacent structures.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a follow-up from a council vote that occurred back in, actually, the end of May two thousand and sixteen during the budget process to remove the pool, the U M S pool, with the understanding that we would create a recreation center out of what was then the family life center, now the Sarah Yard Center. The Sarah Yard Center has been operational since July. We went out for bid about a year and a half ago. We had three bids, they appear on page two oh four, JP Edwards at twenty-eight thousand, T S I disaster fifty-one thousand three, and TAP construction eighty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. We budgeted this budget twenty-seven thousand dollars, and that's what we thought we would need. As you can see, it's twenty-eight thousand, we went back to JP Edwards, and it's been a year and a half since they did this bid. They increased their bid to ten thousand, or I'm sorry, by ten percent to make up for inflation and increased costs, which brings that cost of thirty-two thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars for removal of the pool. With the twenty-seven thousand dollars we have budgeted, we also have six thousand dollars left over in parks and recreation from the purchase of the truck, and also from the playground equipment for Smith Collins Park that was approved earlier tonight. So, we do have thirty-three thousand dollars available without changing anything in the budget to remove the pool, and I'm recommending that we do so as the council requested back in two thousand and sixteen.
One point I thought when you talked about it as a splash park with the removal of the pool.
I don't recall that conversation. I don't believe that was part of the vote.
Did anyone mention here?
There, the council, I thought, yes, or that. Yes, or that.
All right, then, all of a sudden, when we talk about the Green Bay and closing of Second Street or whatever, I even had this conversation with Proton and Scott, that was talking about splash park, you know, possibly being put up there, but their residents don't even, they don't want it. But here again, take some out of East Smithfield and that Sarah Yard Center, which is only open three hours, three days out of the week. So, I mean, here again, we flash all the way back, we get to talking about, you know, the economically disadvantage to the minorities, stuff get moved, and, you know, we find a cheaper way to do nothing. So, but, I'm not, I'm not gonna rank brave on that, but... We want to put a splash park where one is not needed, but of course, you know, for the neighborhood, for Mr. Park, with the pool was taken away, there's nothing there for them kids who actually need that community and stuff. But this is just the old cycle. Now, them kids don't have anything to do. They don't need to want to get locked up, go into a new jail. This is the old cycle. Old cycle. But we get mad at the school system. What are we doing for the kids in the community? Don't blame the schools. What are we doing in the community for the kids? Nothing. Taking stuff away.
So, there has been discussions about... Flash park over in that area? Or whatever council... Does it have, not, when taken out, we're immediately... Here, you know, look at that. You already had some...
It's gonna happen all the time, you can't down the road, it's gonna happen all the time. I mean, just, just bring us something, it's gonna happen all the time. Nothing to look at.
Yeah, there is actually.
We're gonna do it, we're gonna do it.
I am, we have a budget to do it.
But stay on the strike, stay on the strike, get rid of the strike, so we can get the pool back. Get rid of the strike. That would be my rules, stay out of it.
Take, take, any of us?
True.
How long is the pool bid out of service?
I know it's been out of service since I've been here, so I got, wait, since two thousand and ten, I think, about the same time I got here.
If that was a public enterprise that left a pool in that shape for that long, would the town be citing them for any violations? Would that be a violation of any ordinance?
Well, I can't say. The, the pool's properly fenced, it's properly lit, it's insured, but it's a, it's a...
It is secure. I, we did talk about, uh, some alternatives, when we talked about splash park, we never really took any votes on it. We certainly talked about that, but... But Council Lee is correct, we discussed it. I don't ever recall discussing a splash park here on Second Street, I just remember that was part of the plan, but I don't think would ever pass. I just think, you know, we... The pool doesn't need to say that. We either, we talked about the monoliths for years, been out of service, it could probably not be put back in service after we redone, so, hold up.
But I would also agree, though, that we have had discussions about, about a splash park over in that community. Matter of fact, the question was asked, and I've asked, uh, who's gonna have several, have had several discussions about splash parks, specifically over there, we talked about it. Because I, I mean, I'm concerned about, I think that's a great place to have one. And the question was, could we put, I asked him, could we put it where the pool's at? The answer would be, no, that doesn't make sense, we can put it on, we need to put it on the other side where the, where the, where the Sarah Yard Center's at. That makes more sense, because it's all centralized there, and that's what we're talking about here, something that needs to be done. We need to make, so the point is, we need to make some plans if we put in the votes for next year. Whatever, we need to do it, I agree with, with Council Lee, we need to do it, it needs to be done, whatever cost, we're gonna have to figure it out. Because that's something, we took something away from them in that community that really to go to the strike center is a little difficult for some of them to make it, and there's no reason why we can't do it, we just need to do it. So, I agree with him, we need to do something as we go forward, we need to keep that in our minds as we do budgeting of how we can get that paid for, because we need to do it.
Yeah. There.
Move we approve this?
Okay.
Aye.
We move on to citizen's item number three. Consideration approval to adopt the twenty nineteen...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Usually, we bring this to the council in December, however, since January first is a holiday, New Year's Day, and that would be this normally scheduled meeting, we felt we need to get it on this agenda, so give everybody adequate notice on when the January meeting would be. On page two hundred and twelve, you have the recommended, staff recommended dates. The first, for January first is actually a typo, should be suggested as January eighth. January eighth, which would be the following Tuesday, not today. July second is up to the council, we can leave it on July second, but because that is in such close proximity, July fourth, sometimes people like to be gone during that week, so we suggested to move it to the next week. And November fifth next year is a municipal election day, so we would ask that we move it to the twelfth, the following...
I think you need to check your December the fourth, it's actually the third, if I'm mistaken. I think that should be December the third, not the fourth. Is that what you had too, guy, I thought, are we gonna look up these dates?
I do not have my calendar here in front of me, so I'll have to...
Well, we're keeping all of them on the first Tuesday, except January, July, I move we approve the schedule.
Second.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
With the changes?
With the changes.
Ah, tomorrow.
How much did that time count?
Okay, council members' comments?
I want to make comment, though, I appreciate our new local newspaper, people being here. If you all know, I'm a strong advocate for a local newspaper, and I'm eager for it to get moving in our area and start supporting and reporting on the town of Smithfield. So, I'm very excited, anything we can do to help you with that, you know?
About to say some pissed up, all of that stuff.
Uh, it's only pretty good stuff.
Anything, anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just have a few quick things. We have a stormwater meeting, Sarah Yard Center, scheduled for November thirteenth at six thirty. We ask that anybody affected by stormwater especially come out to that meeting and give us their views and hear what we're looking at and where we're trying to go with stormwater. We have our annual wine walk on November sixteenth, five to nine downtown, that's a great event. A lot of people come not only from Smithfield, but from out of town, so please try to attend that. We have our gobble-wobble run on November seventeenth in the morning at eight o'clock, and our Grinch Run on December first at ten o'clock at Community's Park. All good things. Last, I would announce that we did turn in our C D B G grant for housing rehabilitation, which is for grant proposal for rehabbing and demolition of condemned homes. Predominantly, our target area is the East Smithfield area, that's for three quarters of a million dollars. Once we get any information back, I'll forward that to council, I would be very hopeful that we will see some of that money come on the way for our community.
I got one question. We put in some light in the first street, and dark street, and included some looks for some holiday lights. We put some holiday lights up on this street.
Yeah, we definitely...
We looked at things, couldn't be that much, just by a couple of trunks. Looks right there, right?
Anything else, gentlemen? Going to closed session? If for the business, now we entertain a motion, going to closed session. Motion going to closed session, just a second? Okay.